Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get officially started this evening, we have some very special proclamations to make. So first of all, I'd like to ask Ms. Tooney to join me. Ms. Tooney here? Did she get hooked up in the crowd outside? Anyway, what we want to do today is issue a proclamation for Arbor Day. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and if Ms. Tooney shows up, I'll be real pleased to be able to present it to her. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Please come and join me. How are you today?
Good to meet you again.
Good to see you. I'm just about a third of the way through, so we're going. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top soils, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and wherever they are planted are a resource of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, on behalf of Beaver Creek City Council, I, Bob Stone, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to present that to you, and I'd like, if you have some comments, stand over here by there, a little closer to the microphone.
Beaver Creek is now a Tree City, USA, and a lot of people, city staff, people and volunteers, worked hard to get us that designation. If you would be on the Beaver Creek City Facebook page, you'll see that we now have our Beautiful Tree Contest going on, and you'll see our parks and all the things that we have done to make Beaver Creek a more beautiful place. Thank you.
Right. If you get on some of the high ground throughout the city and just look out over the horizon, I mean, it is a very green community. There's a lot of trees in this community. The next proclamation we have is Older Americans Month. Tyler, are you here?
John Demmer will be excited.
And John's coming up too? Or he's coming up by himself? All right.
Oh, boy.
Tyler put you on the spot, didn't he?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Come on up and join me. All right. Whereas each May, Ohio and the nation celebrate Older Americans Month. Now, you and I, we've been through this a few times, I think, the Older Americans part, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it is time to honor our elders for their legacies and their contributions to our nation. And whereas, the senior adults in Beaver Creek are among our most treasured resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by adversity, and interpreting events through -- oh, and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our community. And whereas, our senior adults have proven to be energetic and involved citizens in our community, taking charge of their health and utilizing their resources to continue an active lifestyle. And our senior center does that, thanks to Tyler back there and company. And whereas, our senior adults are valuable members of society who enhance the Beaver Creek community as well as our personal lives. And whereas, our senior adults should be recognized and honored as well as the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for and work with many of them. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I, Bob Stone, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Older Americans Month in the city of Beaver Creek. So sir, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's okay. Oh, no. You get up there, you got to talk.
I guess it's good to be old. I don't know.
It is.
But I volunteered at the senior center, driving and escorting our mainly widows to different spots, doctors, grocery store, et cetera. And I think it's a great service, and the center is very proud to do this for our seniors. And I've actually used it before I even joined here. And you do not have to be a member to use our services. Other than that, I enjoy working with the staff, and it's -- my wife wants me out as often as she can, so that's another reason to volunteer. But again, I actually love to live in Beaver Creek. I think it's a great city, and that's about it, I believe.
All right. Thank you very much. And if you're looking for someplace to volunteer, it is exceptionally rewarding to be one of the drivers or escorts on our senior transportation program. So I encourage you, if you have an extra day of the week or something, that you can go there and volunteer, it would be much appreciated. All right, next we have National Bike Week. And sir, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Are you all by yourself today?
I am.
All right. Like, we've done this once or twice, too.
I haven't been here for this part, but.
All right.
Here we have. Oh, here's Matt. Come on up.
Matt? All right. Whereas, for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And whereas, since 1956, the League of American Bicyclists has declared the month of May as National Bike Month to encourage Americans to experience the benefits of bicycling through community events, helmet promotions, educational programs, and other bicycling activities. And whereas, the city of Beaver Creek recognizes that bicycle riding is a valid form of both recreation and transportation, and that increased bicycle use is a simple way to improve the health of our residents, the quality of our air, and the vitality of our community. And now therefore, on behalf of the city of Beaver Creek City Council, I, Bob Stone, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as National Bike Month. May 17th through May 23rd is Bike to Work Week, and May 23rd, 2021, Bike to Work Day, all here in the city of Beaver Creek. So gentlemen, the mic is all yours. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Have a good day.
I'll let you. All right. Yeah, it's been a little bit of a challenge the past year or so trying to put events on, because Joe knows, most of the things we do involve face-to-face interaction in some way, shape, or form. But hopefully, as more folks start getting vaccinated, we will get back out on the trails and have events again and interact with people. There is the Miami Valley Cycling Summit, happens every two years, is coming up May the 7th. It's actually going to be a virtual event this year, so anyone's welcome to attend that. And then the following week, I think the city of Kettering is helping to host that, so there'll be a self-guided bike tour through the city of Kettering, so May 14th, the following Friday, that'll be available as well. So just a couple of upcoming events for Bike Month. I'm not sure with, you know, traditionally, there's a Bike to Work Breakfast and things like that. I don't know that that's going to be happening this year, but we do have the Cycling Summit still going on, so have that to look forward to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I would ask Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Schwartz to join me, please. Susan, are you here?
Suzanne.
Suzanne, I'm sorry. Please come up. I'm going to allow these young ladies and you, Suzanne, to take the charge of this.
Well, you've been at our ceremony before. And I know, Joanne, is that -- hi, how are you?
Very good to see you again.
So I think we have three Girl Scouts this evening.
You do have three.
If the Girl Scouts accomplish something very special in their lives, please come up and join the councilmembers, please.
I'm going to take a sash off now, not as well. Where do you want them to stand?
Right of friends.
Right in the middle here. They have the councilmembers on each side. And if you wouldn't mind, if you would describe what's the Gold Award place?
Sure. I can definitely do that. I probably don't even need a mic. So the Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award that a Girl Scout can earn. If you're not familiar with the Gold Award, it's kind of equivalent to the Boy Scouts Eagle Award. It is a leadership award with some service, and so a girl usually spends at least a year or more on a project. I know that Catherine and Corinna actually fixed up dilapidated parks in Beaver Creek. So one of them was Sloughina Park, and the other one refreshed my memory.
Fox Run.
Fox Run Park. And they did it all last summer, couldn't have people out there with them besides really immediate family and close, you know, so it was kind of a challenge because there were all kinds of obstacles with both of them. Every time they would show up to the park, something had happened or something wasn't being done right. And Noel Maserelli, she also fixed up a park. It was a children's playscape park in Beaver Creek that had been ruined by the tornadoes in 2019. So she completely redid -- she -- the stuff that was left there, there were a few things that were left. She cleaned all of those up, and then she came up with other designs of her own, because she wanted all the children's things to be made out of nature, nothing plastic, nothing, you know, because she loves nature. She did the cutest grocery store, and she did these little food, you know, like, it would be like food, but it was blocks of wood that you put like actual labels on. It was very nice. Unfortunately, because of COVID, she couldn't leave them sitting out, at least not last summer. So she did have an open house last September, and it was -- I attended. It was pretty well-attended. So I know you two girls had open houses. One of you had some rain. I know that that impeded, but the other one, I think, was, you know, pretty successful. I mean, these girls gave back to their community, and that's what you're supposed to do with your Girl Scout Gold Award. You're supposed to do a project that gives back to your community and then some. So we had our ceremony yesterday, and they all are wearing their Gold Award pins, and it was outside at a campground, kind of actually windy and a little cool until the last half hour, but we persevered, and we had celebrated 21 Gold Award Girls this year in all of Girl Scouts of Western Ohio. So, but Beaver Creek was definitely very well-represented. They have six Gold Girls this year, the most of any city. So, very proud.
Very good. And I think we have some special stuff.
Yeah, you do.
And actually, if you don't mind, girls, as House Councilwoman Akers introduces you, if you would mind telling a little bit about why you chose the project that you chose? In addition to, I know Suzanne gave a great overview of some of the things you've done, but why it was so important to you, why you chose it, and a little bit more about the project.
There you go.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to just read the first certificate. They all say the same, and then I'll present each girl. So this is a certificate of recognition. This one in particular is presented to Noel Maserelli for earning the Gold Award, the highest award in Girl Scouting that can be achieved. This award acknowledges the power behind your dedication to not only empower and better yourself, but to also make the world a better place for others. So thanks to you.
Thank you.
I can get one at the very end, the photo.
Okay. I just passed the mic. You can explain your project.
Okay. So I did some, I don't know if this is on. Okay. I did some projects at Rust Nature Reserve. Like Suzanne said, it was hit by the tornadoes, so a lot of stuff was damaged, and a lot of the trees had fallen down. So one of the main things I did was buy some sail canopies, and we have them installed there. Some of them are over the sandboxes, so they provide a lot of shade because a lot of the trees are gone. So that was kind of one of the main things I did. Another thing I did was make a new sign for the park because the old one was completely destroyed by the tornado. So that was kind of the other big thing. And my inspiration was just, I love being in the outdoors, and I knew that that park was badly damaged from the tornado, so I wanted to be able to help them out.
The next is going to Corinna Ress.
So I did my project at Fox Run Park, and it's just, it's a really pretty park. Half of it's in a field, half of it's through the woods, and there's just, there's a lot of cool trees there. I worked with the Tree Advisory Board to identify several of them, so you can learn something about the trees along the way. What else did I do?
Are you, did you have the 300-year-old?
Yeah. One of the trees that we identified was a 300-year-old chickapin oak, which is really cool. My inspiration behind the project is, like Noel, I love being outside in the outdoors, and I like learning things, and I worked with Mr. Wyke on my Silver Award, and I thought it would be cool to do my Gold Award with him, too.
Very good. And last, Catherine. You're welcome.
So my Gold Award was at Dominic Sloughina Park. A lot of people, when they think about it, they usually think about the pond or the old YMCA. It's now the Dayton Raiders swim team. And Sloughina Park is really pretty, but there's all the trees, and something that I like to do, I like to go outside and just walk through the woods. And I thought that it would be neat if other people during the pandemic could go and just walk and hear the birds and see the trees as well. So there originally, technically, was a path through the woods, but the city of Beaver Creek helped us. I think they took a bulldozer to it, or they took something to it, but there's a trail now. And so we created the trail. I added in a nature play area for the kids, so they could come in case they didn't want to go to the normal playground. I installed, oh, there was a vine swing, hopscotch, a lean-to, and a bench for the parents and guardians. There's also a creek that cuts the trail pretty much in half, and there was an old bridge there that fell down, and it was dangerous to cross. So I installed stepping stones, and the city of Beaver Creek provided a whole lot of gravel, and we made a little gravel entry and exit way. I really liked my project. I thought it was good, and it taught me a lot. I think it's nice to know that other people can go and hike or walk or enjoy the nature as well.
Yeah, do I need it? Okay. Thank you all very much, and Suzanne, thank you for putting this together and having the girls come. As you mentioned, this is only a portion of our Beaver Creek girls that represent our community, but what admires me about not just the three up here and all six in our community, but all of them in the Girl Scouts, is the ingenuity year after year to find a different idea. You would think after so long that they would run out of ideas, but it amazes me, every single year, they come up with something new, and I think, I never would have thought of that, or how did they think of that? So hearing what motivates you and hearing that you found a passion and you can use it for your community is wonderful. And so many of you have said that they worked with our city, which I know is as educational for us as it is for them. So I think that's great, too. So we appreciate you being here tonight. I know you had the ceremony yesterday. Usually, it's a very large ceremony, very long day, very time-intensive, but it's great inside. But it's nice, too, because they have local legislators as well as people from the Air Force that come in to congratulate these girls for such well-deserved work. But we appreciate everything that you do for our city and our community, and I know everybody in those parks is going to appreciate it as well.
We had no dignitaries yesterday to keep it small. And I might add that these three girls did an outside project, but they're all passionate about the outside and about nature. We had other girls that also had to -- they did outside projects because their project first started inside, and then the pandemic hit, and they had to pivot and come up with something that they were able to do outside safely distanced after everything opened back up, because I know Catherine and Corinna had already started their project when the pandemic hit. But we have not met in person with any Girl Scouts since March of last year. We do it all via Zoom, and Noel started her project after the pandemic hit. She had to wait till everything opened back up, so these girls couldn't do anything until things opened back up.
Challenge.
So, yeah, it was a big challenge, but this is how resilient Girl Scouts are. They take on a challenge, and they work through it. So, thank you.
Oh, you're going to get a picture here? Come in here. Get in there close. I've been a party to, or a beneficiary of, all your works in the various parks, so it is, I enjoyed it on a regular basis, so thank you very much. And if you don't mind, if you would stick around for the next couple minutes and lead us in the pledge when we open our meeting, will you do that for me?
That would be great. Would you do that?
All right. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And ladies, if you would come forward and join me and up by the microphone and lead us in the pledge, I'd appreciate that. And we'll start on your cue, so when you ladies are ready, please go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we'll remain standing just for a moment, just take a moment to pause. And just, the Girl Scouts are a great example of the hardships that everybody is going through and has to deal with on a regular basis, and so they pause to reflect and hope that tomorrow brings a more open day and more back to normal. Thanks, ladies.
You too. And hopefully, we'll have a ceremony next year.
I'm sure you will. All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any alterations?
Your Honor, I move to amend the agenda, move to amend the agenda by adding agenda item DXG Economic Development Transfer TREX Liquor Permit for Agnes and Orson II LLC at the Green.
Second. And that is where now?
Nine G.
Nine G.
Nine G. I've got it on.
It's already there.
I know, it's already there. Oh, we have to have it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to have it.
And I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is amended. Anything else?
Question to approve, amend as amended?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes.
Move your approved minutes from April 12, 2021, regular meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 12 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Public carrying, PUD 06-6.
This is an application filed by Woodward, Woodard Development, 205 East First Street, Dayton, Ohio 45402. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a three-story, 82,500-square-foot office research facility on 10.99 acres. The property is located on the east side of Mission Point Boulevard, approximately 2,100 feet south of Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book 1, Page 3, Part of Parcel 2 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant present tonight? Please come forward and give us a little history.
Very good. Are we good to take the mask off?
You may, sir, and name and address, we appreciate it, sir.
My name is Brad Dowdickin. Address 8746 Dow court, Dayton, Ohio 45458. Very good. Well, council appreciates the opportunity this evening to present this. Mission Point, been a little while, I think, since we've had these conversations. On behalf of Woodard Development, we want to thank the council for the opportunity and thank Planning and Development as well for helping get us to this point today as we move along. The proposal, as was mentioned, is for two buildings on the site, and I guess I'll leave the technical details to Sandra to help walk us through. Some of you may have worked with Jason Woodard in the past or Scott Lobby on other developments in the region or in Beaver Creek specifically over the last couple of decades. This is a continuation of that work previously. Had, actually, it's been a year, right? But through that time, we've had some pretty optimistic responses from a number of potential tenants into this type of space who've acknowledged a market opportunity for this size of space with certain R&amp;D and Class A office-type capacity. We've seen movement on the base, infrastructure investment, investment in additional programming as well, and to developers, that gives us a sense of optimism, and there's obviously a ready plat available to us here at this location, which Woodard Development has the option to develop along the way. So with that, with that market push that's there, we began the process of putting together the design team to begin putting the specific site in front of you this evening. So I want to thank Sandra, Randy, thank you for your efforts, the departments within the city of Beaver Creek for helping us just get over our early, well, we're pretty minor obstacles. We're pretty happy with the team that we have, Bayer Becker, Motive Four, ourselves along the way, and we look forward to moving this forward. So from that point, I'll turn it over to staff, but we remain here to help answer any questions as we go along.
Thank you very much. And it is staff time. Sandra?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. For he's an application requesting approval, specific site plan within PUD 06-6 that, should it be approved this evening, would allow for the construction of one three-story office building and one two-story office building within the Mission Point Development located at 2601 Colonel Glenn Highway. So the original ordinance that outlined the rezoning of this property was approved by City Council in 2007, and at that time, the PUD called for approximately 1 million square feet of office space, approximately 150,000 square feet of hospitality and hotel, and 300,000 square feet of retail development, and then a small residential component on the southern portion of the project. So the first building within the development was a three-story, 94,000-square-foot office that was approved by City Council with specific site plan number one in 2008. That building was constructed in 2008 at the end of Mission Point Boulevard. It is the only building, as you're driving down Colonel Glenn, that you see within that development. And since that time, we have had a couple of other potential developments come that was approved by City Council with specific site plan number one in 2008. That building was constructed in 2008 at the end of Mission Point Boulevard. It is the only building, as you're driving down Colonel Glenn, that you see within that development. And since that time, we have had a couple of other potential developments come through the process, but none of those ever came to fruition. We haven't had any new construction there until now. There have been some decisions that have been made by the Department of Defense to move some of their contractors off of the base. So there's definitely been a lot more interest in additional office space outside of the fence within the city. And we're seeing that here tonight. And then you'll be seeing a few new projects coming forward in the coming months for some additional office space as well. So both of the buildings that are being proposed are identical in design and in materials. This is Building A, it's a three-story building. It's 82,500 square feet. It's approximately 47 feet tall, 59 feet tall at that main entrance. And then you have the two-story building, which is approximately 32.7 feet tall. So both of these buildings, as you can see, will consist primarily of differing shades of gray brick. There's also some Ephes accent features and then also some, some metal accent features as well. The third story on the Building A, the three-story building, is primarily made of Ephes. So as you can see on this, the, I believe it is the west, yeah, the west elevation on Building A, and then the north elevation, which is not reaching, but there, on Building B, you have overhead doors. Those are going to be contingent on tenants. Some tenants may not require them, others may. So if those doors are not constructed, then those elevations will look exactly the same as the opposite elevation. Otherwise, both of the buildings are architecturally similar to the existing building that was constructed out in Mission Point. And although the colors and materials are a little, a little bit different, they will blend well, but still maintain kind of that individuality. So each of the, each of these two buildings will have a singular access point off of Mission Point, off of Mission Point Boulevard, off of that private drive that, that will be constructed off this, this drive off of Mission Point Boulevard. And there will be a five-foot sidewalk on the north side of that that then will connect out to the existing sidewalk on Mission Point Boulevard. The applicant is also proposing to construct 388 parking spaces along with 13 handicap accessible spaces. The zoning code requires one space for every 300 square feet of floor area, which would bring that required total to 390, so they are too short. However, they are proposing future parking in this shaded area down below, which we have added a condition of approval that if, at any point, we feel that it's necessary to get those in, if, if we feel that the, the parking isn't adequate, that they will have to construct those at that time. But at this time, that 388 parking spaces, staff is comfortable with that at this time. Applicant is also proposing two wet ponds out along Mission Point Boulevard. Those ponds will both be aerated with fountains. And then the landscaping will be continued. There is a decent amount of landscaping out on the site that will be continued through here. And staff is satisfied with the proposed landscape plan. And we obviously will require a final landscape plan before we release any zoning permits. And then as far as their lighting goes, they, they do meet all of the requirements of our lighting section of our zoning code. And we have added a condition of approval that just requires that the, the light poles match in height and design, the existing light poles that are, that are already out on the site. And then finally, as far as signage goes, they didn't propose anything, any specific signage because we don't have any specific tenants pinned down at this point. But we did come up with some sign parameters for them that are consistent with the existing signage on the other building. And so we just did add a condition that requires that the signage on the long elevations be no greater than 300 square feet and the signage on the short elevations be no larger than 150 square feet total. We didn't specify a number of signs because obviously they could have several different tenants and most tenants do want to have some sort of visibility as far as signage goes. Staff is recommending approval with the 19 conditions in the attached motion. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we'll accept public input. If there's anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this application, please come forward. Seeing none, open it up to council. Any discussion? Just help yourself.
I just wanted to really thank staff and the Planning Commission for really hammering out all the details with the 19 caveats. Of course, I want to thank Mr. Woodard for your investment in Beaver Creek community. It's fantastic. And finally, I just, I really like the architectural standard that you put forward with this product. I think it'll blend nicely out on the site. And I look forward to seeing some more development in that area.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd echo Councilmember Bales's comments. First, I'd like to thank the developer. This is really a wonderful initiative and I think it'll be an excellent addition to Beaver Creek. I had a chance to visit the site and had a few questions. And I really think Randy and Sandra did a very good job there. Do have one, I think, quick question. That is, the, the pathway that runs alongside Mission Point Boulevard kind of curves in a number of areas. What is the closest point between the pathway and the retention pond in footage?
I'd have to take, yeah, not quite sure. I think the original intention, when they first, uh, their first, um, like, concept plans for the site was going to have, like, these meandering walks kind of through it. And obviously, as, as development stalled in there, I think they've moved back to kind of doing the straight paths. But we will, we will make sure that there is a, a safe distance between that pathway. I'll, I'll make sure with our engineering department, if there is an actual standard and make sure that, if that, that that's being met. And if we don't have one, I'm sure that they know that, a, a safe distance for that, that pathway away from that detention pond. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Charles, anything?
Nothing, just very glad to see the development. It's, uh, super. Congratulations. Looking for great things out there at Mission Point.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Just for the applicant, can you tell me roughly how many employees you expect or, you know, the type of jobs, high-tech, higher-wage jobs? What are, what are we looking at here? So residents understand.
You'll have the answer of, of we don't know yet, right? It's really tenant-specific when we get into that, right? So we don't have a clear answer for that at this point.
Are you a lawyer? I mean, it sounds very, very, it sounds very lawyerish of you.
Lawyerish. So entrepreneur by original training. So, yeah, good at, good at that. So, yeah, we, I'd.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, I'll just echo what everyone else has said. Thank you for finally bringing this project forward. It's, it's been a long time in the process. And as Councilman Doer, I went out there today just to look at it and, uh, just to kind of get it in my mind how it worked. And I think it's going to look really good out there. So thank you very much for considering Beaver Creek and moving that here.
And sometimes it just takes a little time. You know, it's, uh, it's been a while since that was started. And sometimes you sit back and it'll finally make its way. I think I know one or two of the possi-, potential tenants, so I won't name those. But the, uh, but no, we look forward to see the movement out there. It's, uh, long overdue and you have to do what you have to do. So thanks, you. Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else have a comment? Do I hear a motion?
I move for the purposes of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for Mission Point on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per Section 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which 19. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I will not read it again. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is PUD, uh, 21-2.
This is an application filed by MI Homes, 9349 Waterstone Boulevard, Suite 100, Cincinnati, Ohio 45249. The application requests approval to rezone 81.66 acres from PUD B398, B3, Plan Unit Development to our PUD Residential Plan Unit Development. The property is located on the south side of Shakertown Road, west of North Alpha Bellbrook Road, further described as Book One, I'm sorry, Book Six, Page 16, Part of Parcel One on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Applicant wish to make a presentation, please.
Hello, good evening. I'll, um, my name's Tom Lothquist. I'm the Vice President of Land at MI. Normally, Brad Austin would be here. Brad had a family emergency, took him away to Nashville. So you're getting the B-team today, but I'll do my best to get through this with, with staff's help. But I am glad to be here. I've worked kind of behind the scenes on this, so it's, it's nice to be back in Beaver Creek and nice to talk about this project. I also brought Ryan Leffeld from Choice One Engineering here to answer the more technical questions. I'm not an engineer. So, um, with that, I'll run through this pretty quickly. You may know MI Homes best for the, um, community right up the street, just about a mile west of, of the site in question. We did Cedar Brook Farm. Cedar Brook's been a great community for us. We're just looking to, to kind of copy paste down the road. Beaver Creek's a great market for us. We're in our final phase here. It's done real well. Pricing's gone well, pace has gone well. It's kind of a builder's dream. So if you're familiar with that, you get the idea of our intention down the street. So, uh, a little bit more about MI Homes. We are a, uh, Ohio-based company. We're headquartered and founded in Columbus. It also puts us in 15 different markets throughout the country and enjoying, like all builders, a, a pretty healthy market right now. What that allows for us is to offer a great warranty. You know, that kind of health as a builder allows you to really back your product. So we have the 11015 transferable warranty, and that's part of our calling card. Not only is it our community's, but our designs and our warranty that, that we think set us apart from other builders in the market. That gives you an idea of our footprint. You can see where, you know, we're headquartered down in Cincinnati, but we're growing along the transportation corridors, serving Dayton, Cincinnati, and Columbus. And you can see Sky Crossing up there in the upper right-hand corner and, uh, all of our positions here in Dayton as we continue to grow in the market. A little bit about the site. It's 81, almost 82 acres. Unusual in that 37, a little more than 37 acres are open space. So it's a, it's a pretty low-density community of 60-foot lots and some 100-foot lots on the western border there. A little more information about our entry monument. Again, one of our calling cards is entry monuments. That's about 11 feet high. We'll get into those details, about 40 feet wide. Really sets the community up well. I think if you look at, visit our other communities, you'll see similar type of entries. So I, I think the plan's a great plan. I think it prevents kind of cut-throughs that, that oftentimes you'll hear people complain about. Doesn't create any traffic bottlenecks. And again, a pretty low-density take on the community. We do have tree lines on the western border and on that southern border, and 8.3 acres of natural topography down in that lower corner there. Slides are catching up to me. And you'll see a big gas main running through that. That runs, I guess, I read, from Texas to New York. So that's, uh, we had to design around that, but easy enough to do it. Part of that, uh, tree line there was, was just to preserve a buffer between us and the neighbors. And we took a couple steps to really ensure that. One, we made the, we moved the houses a little closer to the street on that edge, which made the backyards larger. And then we made those lots deep. So at 195 feet, they're about 40 feet deeper than the lots that butt up to them in the rear. By moving the house forward a little bit, we created, you know, an extended rear yard area. That creates a real buffer. In fact, that tree line, that 25-foot tree line's probably closer to the neighbor's house than it, than it is to the ones we'll be building. But we think that, uh, you know, really creates a nice buffer between the communities. And as we heard today about trees, we don't want to knock them down. They do help, they're economically viable to sell to homeowners. So we're all for preserving that tree line in the back. A little bit more about this landscape plan, and then we'll get into kind of fine details of it. Street trees creating really a nice walkable, especially this time of year. Sometime after the cicadas leave, have a, a great-looking community. A little bit more details on the entryway. I won't bore you reading all of that. Here's the floor plan, similar to what we're offering up the street. You know, we're estimating $475,000 average sales price. In today's market with lumber doing what it's doing and rates being low, I think we probably aired on the short side there. Up the street, our last three sales have averaged well over $500,000. As high as $581,000. Some of that's lumber, no doubt about it. But a lot of it is, I think, once a community starts to become what it is. And Cedar Brook is starting to do that. And people can see the vision and their willingness to invest, I think, really improves. And that's why we're seeing that kind of hockey-stick movement at price up the street. And we would expect here, as people start to see the vision, when the model's complete and houses get started and the landscape goes in and it all starts to come together, it really plays well. So we, we expect to see that similar price and, uh, and higher. There's a little bit about the plans. Oh, uh, just one more last look at the site. And then I just also wanted to thank staff for everything they did, working through the recommendations, working together, you know, is always great so we can get to something that, that really works for everybody and allows us to be a good neighbor in the community. So with that, I'm open to any questions you might have or staff can kind of run through, through theirs. But thank you for this. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Questions on the zoning?
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The case you have before you this evening, actually, this is two cases you have before you this evening. And I'm going to do this as one presentation and then have you guys at the very end, if we could do a vote on the rezoning case, have a public hearing on that, close the public hearing, well, have a public hearing and then vote on the rezoning, and then have a second public hearing on the specific site plan, and then have a vote on that. That way, you know, we're all legal and, and we get the votes for each individual case. But I didn't want to go through the same presentation twice for you guys this evening. Again, the, the case you have before you this evening is a rezoning of about almost 82 acres of currently commercially-zoned property. And this is to allow for the construction of 146 single-family homes. The range of square footage that they provided for, for you this evening and in the plans is between 1,544 square feet and 3,918 square feet. And there's, uh, some single-story, and those are on the lower end of the square footage. And then there's some two-story architectural elevations. Again, as the applicant stated, they anticipate the, the starting range to be at 350, but, but average is well above that, close to half a million dollars for a home. The project's located on the southeastern corner of Beaver Creek. It's just south of, or southwest of the intersection of the newly extended Shakertown Road and the newly extended North Alpha Bellbrook Road. It's the 82 acres that are highlighted here in blue. It's, it's not everything that's on this side of the street. You can see that there is still some, some acreage that's actually down in the floodplain that will be to the northeast of this proposed PUD that will still retain the, the zoning that the entire area is zoned currently. The property has about 1,800 feet of frontage on Shakertown Road and about another 385 feet of frontage on, on North Alpha Bellbrook Road. You can see on the aerial, this, this kind of area vacant of trees. That's the high-pressure gas line that the applicant was discussing. And it goes through Terra to the south and ultimately south of Beaver Creek, and then east of Alpha, and then east over by Hunter's Ridge and Hunter's Point, and then ultimately out into township and the county, and off into the rest of the country. Again, the area highlighted in yellow is the area we're considering this evening. It's currently Zone B, well, PUD B398, which is in old township zoning designation. It was zoned this way back in the township days and then amended in 1981 to allow for the construction of a regional mall. This is where the Mall of Fairfield Commons was originally going to go, but then ultimately moved to its current location. But the zoning is retained. So this property is zoned for a litany of highway business district uses that aren't necessarily compatible immediately adjacent to a single-family residential neighborhood. As you can see, to the west is R1B and some R1B, and then also some Because as you can see, to the west is R-one-B and some R-one-B, and then also some R-one-A to the west and to the south. And again, to the east and northeast is the remainder of the existing commercial zoning. In terms of the land use plan, this whole area is designated as mixed use, which, as just as it sounds, it's, it calls for a mixture of residential and commercial, you know, allows for the opportunity for both. Within vacant plan area ninety-two, which is where this is located in the land use plan, it states that if, if single-family residential is included on, within this, this area, it should be at the low-density development standard. And on our land use plan, low density is defined as anything under three dwelling units an acre. With the math that they're showing this evening and what they're proposing, it's a density of one-point-eight dwelling units an acre. So it's well below the density allowed in the land use plan for low-density residential. If they did up to the full three dwelling units an acre and produce, I think, around two-hundred-and-forty-four homes on this eighty-one acres, so they're almost a hundred less than what they, what they could if they went, were pushing the full max in the density of, of the acreage. So it, their rezoning request is compatible with what the land use calls for this area. Again, the property is Zoned B-three, well, PUD with B-three underlying uses, meaning it's, it's a PUD in name, but the uses are what's allowed in B-three. And, and this list here is a, is a, is partial list, and it shows they could have shopping centers such as what you have, you know, where Lowe's and Kohl's and all that is, bars and taverns, gas stations, auto dealerships could go there, and that's kind of a popular. Thirty-five corridors got quite a few auto dealers, so that's something that's not out of the realm completely. Drug and alcohol rehabilitation sites could be in this. That's what the current zoning as it is. The only thing they would need to do and be compatible with the zoning is meet a fifty-foot buffer, and they could put the parking lot to any of those facilities within fifty feet of the existing residential neighborhood. We did a, kind of a back-of-the-envelope calculation. With a hundred-and-forty-six homes, the average traffic counts would be about fourteen-hundred cars a day additional on Shakertown. If they developed this as a B-three with what they could do, we estimated about seventy-five percent of the square footage you'd find up near the mall on the safe side, and they came out to about sixteen-thousand cars per day. So it's more than eleven times as many cars if this went commercial rather than, rather than single-family residential on this whole site. What they're proposing is to include uses allowed in R-one-A zoning districts, and that includes one-family dwelling units and then public community centers and buildings and parks and playgrounds. And then there's a, a list of conditional uses, and these are allowed in any single-family residential neighborhood in the city, and anyone that's zoned R-one-A includes, including churches, bed and breakfasts, living, assisted-living facilities and the like. Seen here is a proposed site plan. They show two access points, one off of Shakertown Road and then one off of Alpha Belbrook, North Alpha Belbrook Road. And the one down here on North Alpha Belbrook, they're anticipating, they're proposing this to be the, the main entrance and this to be a secondary entrance. And that's just based on the signage. There's going to be adequate turning for both, both entrances. In terms of building setbacks called out in the zoning and then shown on the proposed site plan, thirty-foot minimum front yard setbacks, thirty-five minimum rear yard setbacks, except the lots that abut the existing R-one-A residential neighborhood, they have to have thirty-five-foot rear yard setbacks. Originally, they showed forty-foot setbacks along these lots, and we asked them to pull them forward, actually, and get them to thirty feet, because the rest of the neighborhood was thirty feet. And as the applicant stated, that gives an opportunity for a bigger rear yard abutting the neighbors to the west, and so we wanted to try to separate the houses on the proposed lots with the houses on the existing lots to the west. No structures should be closer to fifteen feet to each other, and on, again, on the lots that abut the R-one-B lots here to the west, they have to have at least a minimum of ten-foot side yard setbacks, which should, would make each house no closer than twenty feet together at a bare minimum. And those are the minimums. That's typically, we see that, you know, that, that creates the biggest possible envelope, and then typically their floor, their footprint is, is smaller than that. It just gives them some flexibility to move the building, depending on the grades and, and how the utilities go in each individual, individual home site. This is just to give you a better look of how it overlays with the existing site and where the proposed detention pond, retention ponds are going to go northeast of the development. These are proposed as wet ponds with, and we added a condition that they have to have the fountains and the aeration device to prevent the water from getting mossy and stagnant. Cedar Brook has, their fountains are going full, full bore now, so you can see, if you drive by there, you can see the fountains going in all their springtime glory. So that's what we're anticipating with both these ponds here in this, this development. In terms of roadways, all the roads that they're proposing in this development will be public roads. They'll be constructed by the developer and then dedicated to the public after our engineering department has inspected them and signed off and made their, their, they're constructed to current residential and city standards, so that they, we're not accepting roads that are substandard in any way. They show sixty-foot right-of-way along the main road that connects the two access points, and then fifty-foot right-of-way along this, this, I guess, secondary road and cul-de-sac. And that's, that what you typically get in a residential neighborhood where you have the residential collector that, that everyone needs to go to is a little bit wider, and then a little bit more narrow on the lots that only select few go on to. I've highlighted the area where the, we're requiring them to set up construction fencing prior to them to start grading on the site, so that the trees and vegetation remains, and that's twenty-five feet on the western side, twenty feet, twenty-five feet on the southern side, and in a good three or four-hundred feet in this southeastern corner. This is actually a pretty steep hill here, so, so they're going to be maintaining a, a big area of trees on the hill that will be visible from the highway, and we want to make sure that, you know, that, that is existing vegetation that stays. The reason they're grading all the way down to the lots is because in order to make that grade work, and we have a requirement that it can't be any more than three to one, so it can't be too steep, because you can't mow it and you get the stormwater runoff that is just not manageable. They needed to get grade up to this area and then make it a consistent grade hill downward towards the neighborhood. So everything starts and flows downward towards the street and into the detention ponds. They're, they're proposing to do this in three phases, with the first phase down in the southeastern corner, and the second phase then taking up a little bit more to the north, and then ultimately, the third phase would be the, the back portion that abuts the existing R-one-B residential neighborhood. Based on the applicant's initial projections, they're anticipating this to take four to six years to go through the, from the beginning through the third phase. But again, that's an estimate. Sometimes you might have a lull. Sometimes you might have a boom in housing. And so just as their best, first estimate, they're not tied to where after six years they have to come back and get a reapproval or anything, but that's what they're anticipating the build-out time to be four to six years. Same. To the next one? There we go. The applicant did a good job of showing the architectural elevations, and again, there's a mixture of single family, or single-story and multi-story buildings, two-story buildings. So far, they have fifteen different variations of different models. Cedar Brook started out with twelve or thirteen, and they've added them, added a few on. We have a condition in that any additional architectural elevations are compatible with what you're seeing here this evening, to be approved by staff. And if there's some disagreement where they think it is compatible and we don't, then there's a, there's a release valve where we would go to planning commission, and they would be the ultimate decider on whether or not it's considered compatible or not. In terms of the landscaping, included in your package is a landscaping plan that shows trees dedicated to each lot. We don't have those to be put in between the sidewalk and the, and the street. They're actually going to be pulled back behind the sidewalks so that, I know some of our other neighborhoods, there's concern with trees lifting up sidewalks, and there's concern with trees growing out into the street and then taken out, or either being taken out by our assault trucks or scratching our assault trucks or any other truck or, or private vehicle that drives up and down the street. So we had, had them move these back slightly and, and really gives the surety of who's in charge of replacing the trees should it die or fall down or anything, where it becomes the individual property owner's responsibility and not, not in the city public right-of-way. One thing, and, and the applicant showed it on their landscape plan, they showed you this, this a few minutes ago, but it wasn't in the one that I received, and we added a condition that additional landscaping be planted on the northeast side of the development and along Shakertown Road, so that it's not just a grass hill, that there is some, you know, landscaping and aesthetic features between this development and Shakertown Road, the main road. Again, they're proposing two entry signs, one being, the main being out on North Alpha Belbrook, a secondary being on Shakertown. I want to go through a few conditions that aren't shown anywhere except in the motion, but they aren't called out in the plan, that, you know, construction hours would be Saturday, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, seven to seven, so that there's no really early morning construction or Sunday construction or something going on late in the evening. Now, the, the condition says exterior construction, so that if they do get the house under frame, they need, you know, the painters need to go in. That, that really has no effect on, on the external community, so it's, it's, it's down to just exterior construction. Again, aeration devices in the pond, that grading limit fence be installed, and once they get the site, you know, completely graded and ready to go for construction, then they'll have to remove that construction fence. We just wanted it in there so that there is a clear delineation, so there's no miscommunication between the developers and the actual construction guys as to where, this is where they need to, you know, maintain existing landscape. And there's actually a condition in the motion that if they did remove something accidentally in, within that grading limit, then they'll have to replace it with a new landscaping, so that, you know, we're clear that we want to maintain a good landscaping buffer between this neighborhood and the existing neighborhood. One of the minimal, the minimum square footage of houses, again, they showed houses down to fifteen-hundred square feet, but on the lots that abut the existing residential neighborhood, I looked at the existing houses in the neighborhood and the average square footage of the homes that are immediately adjacent to this development, averaged around twenty-six-hundred square feet. So we, we stated that that's the minimum house size for the lots that abut the existing residential neighborhood. And we also had a caveat and a condition that there's, the same elevation can't be used adjacent to each other or across the street, so that there's not, it doesn't look like the same exact house right next door or right across the street from each other. So there's that condition as well. Again, there's two, two actions we, both staff and planning commission recommend that you approve this evening, the first being the ordinance and the second being a motion for the site plan. The ordinance has nine conditions in your, in it for your consideration. Specific site plan motion has twenty-eight conditions, and again, the planning commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's requests. And I will be here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, what we're going to do next is we're going to enter into the public hearing for the rezoning. So anybody here that has comments on both the rezoning and the site plan will have two opportunities to talk this evening. So we're going to start with the, with the rezoning, and this will be the public hearing on changing the land use from B-three to residential. So is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on the rezoning portion of this application? Please come forward, give us a name, an address, please. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes unless you have some donated time.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Hopin from six-nine-nine Book Meet Court in Terra Falls, abutting the proposed project. And I basically have a question, is density or lot size or any of those issues in the rezoning portion of this, are those all on the other part of the hearing, the other hearing? Density?
Density you can talk about, sure.
Okay, super. So I want to go over several points. I am a resident of Terra Falls for twenty years. In addition, I am president of the Homeowners Board of Association of Trustees, and so I'm here trying to share information that, after speaking to a number of people who could not make it this evening and or feel their voices on the matter. So I'm here trying to, trying to pitch, pitch in for a number of people. So regarding density, one of the, one of the issues that, that concerns a number of neighbors is the suggestion that, that the, sort of the low-density threshold of three houses per acre, that this project is one-point-eight homes per acre. And I wish to point out that to the council, that even though that is how it's calculated, when you actually look at this lot, you can see that, I don't know if you know the numbers, that forty-six percent of this proposed project is actually green space. And the developer is suggesting, wow, look at, we're so generous, we're giving you all this green space. Well, you can't see it on this particular, and I don't know which slide it's on, the whole northeast corner is floodplain. They can't build over the pipeline that goes down the middle, and then the whole southwest corner is all really unbuildable terrain. So the, if you take out all, and again, I know that how they do calculations, but I'm saying in reality, these lots are really tiny, except the ones that directly abut Terra, because they're factoring the fact that there are thirty-five, forty acres of green space, but they're actually just unusable land that they couldn't build on anyway. So there is concern amongst the neighbors about the density here and, you know, how the, the official calculations are done versus what actually shows up there in terms of how tight these houses are and how tight the lots are. The other thing that I want to point out, and I don't, I don't know if this is density or not, as Randy just was discussing the size of the homes, is that more the planned?
We're going to have more of the site plan.
The second one, okay. Okay, I think that is my main concern regarding density. The other issues probably fall into the other category. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council on the rezoning? Do we have anybody out and always? Pete wants to check and see. Okay. Written input, please.
Yes, Mayor, I received four emails. Michael Tedesco, he was concerned with the density as well. And Ethan Harper of Terra Falls was opposed of new housing development based on the density as well. And Carolyn Lucenti, I'm not sure where she lives, she did not state it, but she's a resident of Beaver Creek, and she's just against cutting down any woods of any kind in any place. And I'm missing one. Mark Butler of Terra Falls is okay with rezoning it, but is still concerned with the density. That is all I have.
And I will add that we, we all had the opportunity to watch the planning commission meeting, and so we heard a lot of input there as well, so we soaked that up a little bit. But moving on, is there anyone else here this evening that wants to address council on the zoning portion? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we'll start with the council input. And Councilmember Kern, would you like to start?
I have nothing at this time on the zoning, Your Honor.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes. Randy, could you explain or kind of help me understand the calculation of density in the residential area?
Did you ask? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Can you explain or help me understand how we are calculating the density? Is it based upon the entire plot of land?
Right, yes.
Opposed to where the actual residential homes are?
Correct. We, we, it's, it's a fairly basic calculation of the overall acreage and the number of lots, and it's just a mathematical equation. If, if this were in the Impact Fee District, which is north of Kemp, then we wouldn't give them credit for the rightaways. But because it's not in the Impact Fee District, we don't give them credit for the public, or since it's, we give them credit, I mean, that's donated land. I mean, it's road, and we're getting road, so it's, it's all part of that calculation.
And can you explain why this particular plot of land is not in the Impact Fee area or does not have an impact?
Back in the early nineties, they established the Impact Fee District. It was based, basically Kemp north, a little bit south of Kemp, but not much, but Wagner Trace north is in the Impact Fee District, and that was based on, I think it all came about because of all the development going on with the mall and, and the northern, into Beaver Creek. It just didn't include the southern into Beaver Creek, because it didn't have the commercial growth rates that the northern had.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Randy, I do have some questions for you. Can you go back to that slide that shows the B-three uses, the conditional list of what's allowed currently if this property is not rezoned?
It might take a second, because somebody's-
No, sure, because as I'm doing that, I'm going to ask Mr. McHugh a legal question as well. So one of the concerns, bless you, one of the concerns that I've seen through emails and through some of the websites, and also that came up in planning meeting, was concern about the infrastructure, and putting in a new housing development, and rezoning this, and the concern and cost and strain on our infrastructure, specifically our roads. So first, I guess while Randy's looking through this, and I think he found it, can you tell me as council legally what we can consider for implications as far as infrastructure on our roads go?
Well, we have an elaborate code with respect to development of land, and one thing we do require is that roads be developed to our standards, and as a part of that, we also are then subject to accepting those roads. So, but they have to be built to our standards, so that we can have some at least a reasonable assurance they're not going to fall apart in a year or two, they should have a number of years of life in them, but that is our code, and we require developers to comply with our code. So that is a very common feature.
So Randy, now that, thank you very much. Randy, now that you have that up, if we're looking at shopping centers, bars, taverns, and nightclubs that could abut this residential property as it currently stands, gas stations, hotels and motels specifically, are we concerned that, or has there been any discussion about the infrastructure on the road that as it currently stands as B3, that infrastructure could be as impacted as it were, as if it were to become a residential neighborhood?
No, I mean, that's the zoning we're dealing, that we have in place now, so that's, I mean, that is what we have, that's kind of like the cards that were handed in terms of the infrastructure. As I mentioned earlier, a single-family residential neighborhood will have much, much less of a per-daily average traffic than a commercial development. Now, if somebody were to come in here in commercial and they, if this were not to go through and a commercial shopping center was going to go there, as part of their site plan, you know, there may be, there would maybe requirements for these cell lanes, or additional lanes, or things like that, and this being in, not in the impact fee district, you know, the developer would, you know, be on the hook for, you know, making those public infrastructure improvements if needed, but it would, really, that's going to be reactive to what someone would come in with.
Thank you, and that's, I think that's in a very poorly worded way of my question. What I was trying to get around to was what the traffic would be like on those roads were at a nightclub, or were at a gas station, or were at a shopping center, as opposed to the amount of traffic you would see in a residential area, if the concern, and we have seen concern from residents as far as the infrastructure on the roads go?
Right, yeah. Like I said, a single-family residential neighborhood, you're looking at 1,400 cars a day of this size, and if they develop full build, what we'd anticipate they could fit there, based on 75% development, you're looking at 16,000 cars a day, so.
And another question, this is, this one might be a little off the wall, but another concern that residents are having are for the wildlife preservation, for, we are, you know, as the mayor did in the proclamation earlier today, we're a Tree City USA, so that is important to us, not just as a council, but as a city as a whole. Preservation of wildlife, I heard on planning commission, a very legitimate concern, a very real concern for coyotes, that if we continue to do this, we're exposing, you know, coyotes to open areas now more. Again, if this stayed as B3, and we put in a shopping center, I mean, theoretically, would we lose more green space that way if we came in and put a lot more concrete parking lots in, or if we put in more buildings for shopping? Is that something that we would see as well in a B3 use?
The intensity of a commercial development would be higher from a percentage standpoint, like in our PUDs, the maximum pervious surface that could be constructed, and that includes the roadways, driveways, house, you know, roof footprints can only be 45% of the site. That's the maximum, I guess, amount of pervious surface, whereas in commercial, you can go up to 75% of the site.
All right, and the very last question, sorry. I just, I've seen so much traffic on this and so much communication, I want to try to adjust as many residents' concerns as possible. In addition to the preservation of the green space, my understanding is that the only way to preserve these areas as either agricultural or for green space is for someone to come in, purchase the property, and never develop on it. Is that the correct understanding, or is there other ways that these areas could be preserved as green spaces?
As private property, you know, the owners have a, you know, reasonable expectation to be able to develop their property. A private owner could come in and declare it a, you know, conservation area, or retain it for the next 30 years, and then decide to develop it as their own single-family neighborhood. The city could purchase it as a, and declare it a conservation easement. I mean, there's a few other caveats that you could do with, you know, transfer of development rights, conservation easement as a donation, like if this was owned, if a large company owned a lot of different tracts in the city, and, you know, you could work with them on transfer of development rights, and like if they owed impact fee for some other project. But this being, you know, private property, you know, they have some reasonable expectation to be able to develop their property. You know, with conservation, this being a single-family residential proposal, there are park impact fees that'll be required to be paid, and that's really a calculation based on the number of units times the current per-acre value of the land. I did a really quick, because I don't know how much they're purchasing is for, this is not something that they've made public, but if it's around the same purchase price per acre as Cedar Brook, it'd probably be around $90,000 park impact fees, and that goes into our park fund, which we can use to purchase, only to purchase, you can't use it for maintenance of existing parks, but only to purchase new, acquire new capital parks, or parkland somewhere else, or nearby, or, you know, we can use that money to acquire property.
Okay, thank you. I promise I'm done on zoning. Thank you, thanks everyone.
Council member Doerr?
Nothing for me, council member Garcia was-
Sorry.
No, no.
You should start this way next time.
I was being on trial. No, seriously, thank you for asking.
A lawyer came in.
Go lawyer side, sorry.
Council member Bayes?
Well, I think councilwoman Garcia brings up good points about property owner rights and current zoning. You know, the current property owner under B3 wanted to build a skating rink, they could do it there, if they followed all the development rules. So in this case, you know, I think that residential PUD is appropriate, but I look forward to a few more questions in the specific site plan. That's all I've got.
Flash, Mayor Adams?
Well, here again, thank you, councilman Garcia, you answered a lot of questions. I just have one quick one. If we don't change this, if it stays exactly what it is, any of those things you go in and we really couldn't stop it, right?
Correct. You would see a site plan, and without any real reason to deny the site plan, you couldn't stop it. I mean, as long as they meet architectural standards, landscaping, screening standards, we'd be hard pressed, you'd have to find a real compelling reason to not allow them, since they have the property owned with the expectation to be able to develop it as a B3.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, and just a sort of one that's not real direct, but indirect, you know, we talked about the one way to preserve green spaces for the city to buy it. If we had money, we'd probably buy a lot more, but there, we are working on a project to acquire another large park, and we can't really talk specific about that right now, but it's in the works. So where we can, and where we can get these park fees from this residential construction, we do invest in other land that's going to end up being open space. So we want as much as the residents do, it doesn't matter, we want as the greenery. So where we can, we do. And that was going to be my question, and I already brought it up, the park fees, but that's all I have for the rezoning. I agree with most of the things that have been said, and in a lot of ways, this is an improvement. It may not seem like it if you live right next to it, and it, if they were building a new plat, right next to my plat, I would be a little more critical than I am when it's not next to me. That's just nature, that's just the way it is. So we will get into the specific site plan here in a little bit. Anybody else for the good on council? Here, a motion?
Motion to move ordinance 21-08 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-08 on to the second reading. And for those in attendance, this is a two-step process for us. It will be at the next regular scheduled council meeting, where we will actually make it final. This is a, sort of a little grace period between the first and the second reading. So nothing we've done tonight has made anything final, other than to move it on to the second reading. So I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 21-08 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. All right. Next is public hearing, PUD 21-2, specific site plan number one.
This is an application filed by M.I. Homes, 9349 Waterstone Boulevard, Suite 100, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45249. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow development of 146 single-family residential homes on 81.66 acres of land. The property is located on the south side of Shakertown Road, west of North Alpha Belbrook Road, further described as Book 6, Page 16, Part of Parcel 1 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything further to add? Okay, staff have anything further to add? In that case, we will move directly into the public hearing. Again, you're welcome to come forward and address council on this specific site plan. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. You may have two other individuals donate their three minutes if you need the extra time. So, first up, who would like to address council? Give us a name and address, please.
Charlie Riganow, 548 Calumet Place in Beaver Creek. Could you go back to the site plan with the colors? No? That's it, good, I'm kidding. So first, we should not lose sight that tonight you proclaimed Arbor Day and the importance of trees, and in this plan, it will result in a cutting down of, I'm guessing, 40 acres or more of trees. So I recognize some of that is necessary to, for the buildings, some of it, there will not be buildings on. So two parts of that. We mentioned along the west side, where there is a row of trees, and I'll call them large bushes, that completely separates the two properties. So I think it important that the properties be separated. The current stand along the west side, the current stand of trees and bushes, will be sold with the property, so they become the property of the new owner, for the owner to do what they want with them, leave them, cut them down, cut them back, whatever. So that would concern the people in our development, Tara Falls. What I suggested in the planning meeting was that the back property line be moved, so that moved to the east, so that the trees are not on, are not on the new homeowner's property, and they would not be able to cut them down. The indirect answer I got to that was, who would want to cut down trees on their property? Or something to that effect. Well, okay, I agree with that, but I didn't find that to be a very satisfactory answer, that I would want to be sure no one was going to cut down trees, bushes on that backed up to my house, that I thought was important to separate my house from houses on the other side of the bushes. So my suggestion is still move the property lines to the east, and change this, the rear setback for the houses to accommodate that movement of the back property line. Second point, when you go down towards the bottom, the current tree line is roughly the line of the properties in the southwest side. So there's an intent to cut a lot of trees down along that line, and that's the part I'm more directly concerned with, because I back up to that. And what is now 100-plus feet of trees behind my house, it looks like is going to turn into maybe, well, 25 feet or so, same as up towards the top, and I would like to see you be able to, in some way, minimize the cutting of those trees. Leave the tree line as it is, except where it might impact the individual pieces of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on, don't be shy. Hi.
Hello, I'm Diana Carlin, 562 Calumet Place, and my property also, backyard adjoins the proposed property. I have several different concerns, I guess I would raise. The first one, along with Charlie, I'm also very concerned about the removal of the trees. I think there was actually a photograph of the proposed property against the current aerial view, it shows a very large number of the trees that will be cut down. I'm concerned about the impact on wildlife, very concerned about the impact on erosion and the water runoff. I know that during heavy storms, I have a huge amount of water that comes through my backyard, and a lot of that comes through the woods that are currently there, so I'm very concerned if we take out a lot of the trees, there's going to be excessive runoff, and it might change the flow of the water, so I'm wondering if there's been a study or some type of assessment on the impact of the water runoff. I would also be concerned as to who is going to maintain that open space. So if they do take out all the trees, and it becomes open fields or whatever, is that the community, the HOA, who's going to maintain property and maintain that, as well as the landscaping that's been proposed? I am also very concerned about the housing density, and I agree if you do a density based on the space to be developed, that density is actually 3.3 versus the reported 1.8. I am concerned about the entrance on Shakertown. There's, that curve on Shakertown may not appear to be very sharp, but I'm very concerned about the view as people will be entering and exiting off of Shakertown, and if there will be sufficient view as people are coming around that curve on Shakertown. So I would be concerned about potential traffic accidents, and so that line of sight, I would ask to be considered and documented. I'm also very concerned about the impact on the school district. Beaver Creek is already very overcrowded, and I'm not sure what the calculation is when you bring in 140, 150 new homes, how many new students that would bring into the Beaver Creek School District, and I'd like to see that consideration, and how that would impact local elementary schools, as well as the higher education schools. Other quickly, I don't know if it was addressed on utilities, I would like to know what the plan is. I'm assuming all the utilities will be underground, as in Tara Falls, all of our electrical utilities are underground, but I would want to make sure that there's not going to be some other type of transform or something that's going to be required for the additional utilities, and where that's going to be pulled from. And then the final question I had was if any of these properties are going to have basements, and what the impact would be if there's significant digging underground. As we mentioned, some of that property is a floodplain, and so if we start digging a lot of basements, I would ask what the impact would be, again, on erosion and runoff of the water.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening again, council, Mayor Stone, Mary Lou Hopin, 699 Bookweed Court, Beaver Creek, president of the HOA in Tara Falls. As I mentioned, quite a few folks have spoken to me that were not able to be here, and I'm going to go a little bit long, so I believe there's at least one or two residents who-
Please stand up and give us a name, please.
Donate their time.
To donate your time, if you- To donate your time, if you... Go to the mic, give a name and address.
Haley Baker, 596 Brookmead Court, Beaver Creek, and I'm going to be donating my, what, two or three minutes?
Three minutes.
Donating my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Haley. So I wanted to bring up the concern that many people spoke to me about as, at the Planning Commission level of this process. So I'm not sure that you're aware that of the five Planning Committee, Commission members, only two were allowed to review and discuss and vote on advancing this proposal because of either there are butters or conflict of interest or whatnot. And, and, and understanding that's fully legit, even the city attorney said this is an unfortunate and unusual situation. Mr. Stepp, who's the Chair Committee, Chairman of the Committee, said this hasn't happened in the 35 years he's been there. So we are asking that the council give very careful oversight to, to resident concerns because this was not really be able to be, you know, could be done at the Planning Commission level. And I want to repeat a little bit about what Diana said about the traffic. So I don't know who, who, if anybody, actually doesn't, you know, does line of sight studies and traffic studies there. I always get tailed coming east into, towards Tara Falls. I have people tailing me. I'm going the speed limit, maybe even a smidge over, and they're tailing me. So the minute I turn off into Tara Falls, they blast past me, and they're going to be coming downhill around a bend with bad sight lines flying through there. And that, that's, you know, whether they're tailing me or they're just driving fast themselves. People are now using Shakertown as an alternative to 35 due to the construction and the eventual smart streets, which people are going to maybe avoid for a while. So this is going to become, you know, even more traffic than it already is over time. And so I feel the entrance is situated too far west, and people have expressed that concern, and Diane mentioned it as well. The other question is about construction entrances. I know that the main entrance is going to be on North Alpha Belbrook, but I don't know when, if they are proposing the Shakertown entrance as a construction entrance. And again, with people flying around that bend, and there's, and they've done a lot of build, a lot of the dirt they took when they built Shakertown Extension, they dumped at the edge of this property that we're discussing today. So the, the banking's are really high, and I'm not sure how they're going to mitigate that to create better sight lines coming around that bend. Discuss density, a number of us, and, okay. Can someone, Randy, perhaps you can pull up the slide that has the flood plain and the wetlands on it? Has like a little orange area on the far right on Alpha Belbrook. So several, several of the houses there, you'll see when you get to that slide, they're actually in the, that's not, yeah, it's the bigger picture. That'll show the flood plain and the orange, do you have that slide? Orange wetlands. So several of the houses actually on, on Alpha Belbrook are actually being built in the wetlands, and I'm concerned about that from an environmental perspective as well as, my understanding in general is that they bring in Phil to build houses on wetlands. And those poor folks whose houses at some point are going to start sinking, you know, or whatnot, or shifting, I mean, those things happen. So you can see there in that, that sort of southeast corner, that orangey spot, those first few lots are, that's wetlands. And then the flood plain is the whole checkered part up to your northeast. There's a giant section of flood plain there. And so those are some of the concerns with, with that spot and how it's being built up. Another huge concern is the exterior construction hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I find, be hard pressed to see if anybody in this room would say, yay, for the next four to six years, I want exterior construction on Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the dust and all the noise and the construction traffic, that's what I'm looking forward to for the next four or six years of my life. So we are requesting that the council consider dropping that till Monday to Friday, 8:00 to 6:00, which I, you know, we feel, I've talked to a number of residents in the area, that that's a much more reasonable work timeframe. Instead of Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., people need a live family time even more in the pandemic than usual. They just want to be home, in the comfort of their home, in peace and quiet, and enjoy So let's talk about the tree line, and yes, we all had the lovely presentation by Mayor Stone about Arbor Day and how important trees are to property values and beautification. The developer is only allowing that 25-foot tree line along the west and south sides, that's only during construction. Once construction's done, that disappears, and as Charlie said, people can cut those trees down. So we would like to see the developer, either through the HOA, through some sort of easement, through whatever it is, preserve the 25-foot setback tree line permanently, not just during construction. And the, Charlie addressed the trees being cut back in that southwest corner. Randy, I don't know if you can pull that up, where their, the trees sit, it's that, that small sort of triangle in the southwest corner. Thank you. So there's huge water drain off. All the houses that are on that line, I used to live along that line, I now moved to a different spot in the neighborhood, my backyard was flooded all the time. Diana gets a river going through her backyard. Those poor folks who are all in that corner, they're the new homes, never mind the existing homes who already have water issues, they don't, if they cut all those trees back, A, that's, that's unfortunate, it's going to, you know, increase erosion, increase water issues all over the place. But I feel that the council or whomever should require the developer to, is that my six minutes or three? To put a drainage system there and feeds somewhere else. And my last question is just, I don't know whether it came up with the 2,600 square feet that the average houses along that line. I have reviewed every single approval for buildable houses there. Those houses are a minimum of a handful of 2,100 square feet, most of them are 24,000 to 5,000 square feet. So how you take those numbers, a handful of 2,100 and most closer to, to 4,000 or 5,000 and come up with 2,600? Thank you so much, everybody. Again, we really appreciate that you give it extra emphasis because of what happened at Planning Committee level. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address counsel on this application?
Nathan Baker, 596 Brookmead Court. And I'll be very brief because our neighbors have been pretty thorough in, and a lot of the concerns that I personally have and our family has are echoed by them, so I won't go through back with all that. But I, I think, as you referenced, Mr. Mayor, if it was your land right next to it, obviously you'd probably have a more, you know, relatable concern and things of that nature, and that's the, the circumstance we are in, of course, so that is our perspective. And so by all means, we understand that there's a lot of logistics and layers that go into why this development would or would not go in, and some of those are unavoidable, and that's understandable. And when it comes to, what I'll focus on is just the, the tree piece for, for the neighboring lots. Understandably, in the middle of this, what is currently green area, there's a lot of trees. I think it was referenced, how many acres would be cut down. That's, that's understandable from the logistics of, of the building. But I, I find it hard to believe, and I, I find it to, to take significant consideration because those that are neighboring, that seems to be, of all the points that we oppose, that's, that's where, there, we would love to see a little bit of compromise and a little bit of extra consideration. Because the bottom line is, if you go up to Cedar Brook and the neighborhood that is adjacent to Cedar Brook, where they have done that very similar 25 feet, it is very, we actually have pictures of it and have looked at it in person, and where they've taken it down there, it, it really becomes very sparse. A lot of the trees back there, you know, are, are dead and, and don't grow in fully and things of that nature. And taking it down to the minimum 25 feet, A, being the concern, and then B, the ability of a, their, the lack of a no-cut ruling, just creates a situation where what, one thing we could have is still having some privacy and some of that natural shade and separation from what's going to be an unfortunate construction situation. That seems like, e, e, even taking it and, and whether it's adjusting the setback, whether it's changing it from 25 feet to 40 feet, or whatever the case may be, it seems like there are some reasonable adjustments and considerations could be made. And I think I would be echoed by our neighbors is, that's the one thing that seems to be the most overwhelming concern if this does become a reality, is losing all that privacy in home value. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have written input? Other than, no more than what we had of the other, right? All right. All right. In that case, we will close the public hearing, and we will start with council time, and we'll start on the other end. Councilmember Bales, would you like to start?
Okay. Please forgive me, but I'm going to probably jump around to a bunch of different topics. I think it's a, it's an important consideration to talk about that setback from the existing residential development. I, I am in favor of supporting some sort of a permanent setback, 25 feet, 30 feet, something like that, where it's either in the covenants where they can't, where they can't touch that, there's a no-cut area, or there's an actual conservation easement along those property lines. I think that that's, that's important to, to create that delineation between the, the two developments. Because once the construction is over and the private property owner has bought their lot, there's nothing that can stop them from cutting a tree down. So I think that that's, that's something that I would like us to consider. Along the lines of trees, again, condition number seven requires only one tree per lot to be planted. You know, that's not very many trees, even though there's going to be a lot of houses in there. There's, I think that we should consider perhaps adding another tree or two. On the flip side, I am impressed with the amount of green space that the developer is providing in the whole overall concept. I understand that some of it may be hillside, forested, and unusable, and, and wetlands, but the bottom line is those are areas that will be kept as green space. Randy, could I ask you a question about item number 11? It was, it had to do with the photo cell on the yard, on the post lights?
Yeah.
So because, I think it was the next, next item, talked about, streetlights have yet to be determined. In my neighborhood, I went through the same exact thing where streetlights had yet to be determined, and they put photo cells on everybody's post light. And, and when we, when we built our neighborhood, we determined that everyone would keep their post lights on at night, and that would forego the need to have streetlights. But then there's a switch on everybody, inside everybody's front door, and so when you walk through our neighborhood at night, you've got spotty light. Even though everybody's post light does have a photo cell, you can still turn it off. So, you know, I, I think that we need to give some consideration to how we're going to handle that, because I, I think it's important that we have quality light throughout the night, whether that be through streetlights, and we think about that, and we incorporate them into the design, or we just hardwire everybody's post lights so that they, they're just on all night.
Yeah, typically, the streetlights are going to be the ones out on Shakertown or North Alpha Belbrook, where you have the, the, you know, most traffic coming in and out at a, at a singular point. And then the interior lights, it's like you said, the photometric, or the photo cell post lights.
Got it. Okay, I understand that. I, can you explain to me what acrylic siding means? I did some research, and I, I found a hundred different answers on...
Right.
...what you mean by acrylic. And is it like, is it acrylic composite, or is it...
It's a, it's almost like a, best way to explain it, it's a hard plastic material, but it's insulated. So I mean, it's, it's kind of vinyl-like, but it's not a thin vinyl that, you know, would rattle and, and fray, and it's not like, it's a vinyl home. It's a, it's a insulated, thick board.
Does it install like hardy plank or more like vinyl siding?
I'd have to ask the developer, the builder, on, on the installation techniques of that. But from our understanding, it's more like a thicker board that's insulated rather than a thin piece of vinyl.
Okay. I appreciate that you've incorporated larger lot sizes next to the abutting neighborhood. Perhaps you'd like to address the density question that was raised by Mrs. Carlin? She, she seemed to think it was 3.3 versus 1.8.
I'm, I don't know how she got her numbers, but I assume that what she did was take just the area that you would see on this map in light yellow. So if you just, just did that and excluded the other 46%, then I imagine that would come up to 3 dwelling units an acre or thereabouts. But that's just not how we calculate density.
Very good. And I guess my last question, which was raised by Ms. Hoppin, was about the wetland issue.
There's a small wetland down by where future lot number one would go.
One and two, it looks like. Are they mitigating that?
Yeah. They're, they'll follow the, any EPA, the, the size is so small that it's, it's not a concern where there would have to be, you know, a completely empty lot where they can follow EPA mitigation techniques. And, and they'll follow all state and federal rules on that.
And I'm sorry if I missed it. Was it written in one of the conditions?
I, I mean, it's, it's really policed and enforced by the state. I can, we can certainly add it that, you know, all EPA requirements shall be followed, but that's something that...
I would feel comfortable if we added it.
I have no problem putting that in somewhere.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Doerr.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking the developer for the investment in Beaver Creek, the Cedar Brook Farms area. The homes look fantastic, and there's a lot of wonderful opportunities in and around Beaver Creek. I'd also like to take time to thank all the residents that attended today, gave opinion, and many that gave me a call or an email, things of that nature. Really do appreciate that from, from everyone. My first question pertains to the agenda pages 88 and 103. Randy, you covered 88 on the right-of-way 60 feet for Sky Crossing Boulevard, and then 50 feet for the rest. Page 103, if I'm correct in reading, the width of the streets are 36 feet and 27 feet respectively. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the Sky Crossing is 36, and the other three streets, Goldfinch Drive, Blue Jay Court, Robin Lane, are all 27 feet?
Right.
Does the 27 feet include the curb? And what does the curb look like on the various roads?
Right. It'll be the curb in Gutter Pan, like you would see, you know, chairback curb, and so it's 36 feet front to front, or 27 feet front to front. So it's curb to curb.
So the 27 feet includes the curved area?
No. It doesn't include the pan itself. So it's basically the difference between the asphalt and the concrete. So it's the asphalt is 27 feet wide.
And then the curb separately?
Right.
Okay. Wonderful.
And it gives 13 and a half feet per travel lane, which is what we typically see, if not more. Typically, we'll see 25 in a shopping area, 25-foot drive aisles, and so this is wider than what you get there.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know if this question is for you or for the developer, but how is the HOA structured? I live in an HOA, Councilmember Bales lives in an HOA. We have some similar experiences, some different experiences, but in terms of how it's put together, is it simply enough residents move in, there's a boilerplate HOA, and then there's a president-elect who's then responsible for running? How does that system work, from my information?
The typical, that's how we did Cedar Brook. One of the conditions is that prior to us releasing any permits, they would have to submit those covenants restrictions and HOA docs. That's just not something they've prepared yet.
Sure.
But we would make sure, if, if there's certain, I guess, practices that you guys have found that you don't think works well, but...
Sure.
In, in a typical HOA, but I, I haven't heard of any, so we would just have it set up like every other HOA where there is the president. Right, in the beginning, the builder would control the HOA, and then when a certain amount of residents move in, then it would be turned over to a board of, made up of the residents. But in a lot of areas... over to a board of, made up of the residents. But in a lot of areas right now, if the developer still owns a majority portion, then they're typically in charge of the HOA until they are no longer a majority owner.
Okay, thank you. I think my, well, there's a lot that I really like about the site plan. There's clear attention to detail. There are some wonderful homes. It's a wonderful Ohio-based developer who've done great work in Beaver Creek. My concern is Goldfinch Drive, with streets that are 27 feet wide, concern from the adjacent neighborhood in terms of lot size. I live in a neighborhood where it's pretty commensurate in terms of road width, and there are just a lot of residents that park on the road. The plus side for us is our HOA manages it fairly well, but it does take some massaging, talking to homeowners, saying, can you park on this side of the street, v's be another. Our other grand advantage, too, is that there are throughways. You can get from one to another. With Goldfinch, I'm concerned about fire trucks, ambulance, emergency vehicles, school buses potentially just getting down Goldfinch Drive. There's no outlet. There are two cul-de-sacs, turnaround points. And if the residents happen to park in ways that are difficult, that are not managed by the HOA, I mean, I don't want to be too dramatic, but there will be emergencies. There's the chance that this will, you know, an emergency vehicle cannot access the very end of Goldfinch Drive. And so, for me, I want to float this to council as to whether we should consider a third meeting on this, just to address some concerns. This emergency has me, I think, very concerned. So just as a point of consideration. Plus, to address Mrs. Hoppin's question about the planning commission, that we've, that it was just a smaller meeting, that we just take some time to really answer the questions of residents. I think there have been some really excellent questions. Councilmember Garcia raised a number of those. There are limitations on what we can and cannot do. But I think a little extra time might be good, just on this case, as a point.
This case is automatically coming back next city council meeting. So there's no disadvantage to, you know, holding off on the specific site plan and vote for it then, or table it to that point. Our engineering department is, Jeff Mormon, our city engineer, is here this evening, and he may be able to answer more specific questions on road widths. I did forward this to our fire department inspector. They're, you know, they had the same, you know, comments as you did, and what they had them do was, if you notice, the cul-de-sacs are a little bit odd-shaped. They're bigger than normal, and that's because they're 100-foot radiuses, rather than the typical 80, so that they can get the school buses, well, the fire truck, but ultimately, the school bus will enjoy the same turning radius as the fire truck. So they did make those cul-de-sacs bigger to be able to handle the bigger apparatus. But, yeah, our engineers, Jeff Mormon's here, if there's specific engineering questions you want to ask him as well.
Thank you very much for your time.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So Randy, you may just want to stay standing.
Yeah, I can.
But first, I do want to thank the residents, and Councilmember Duer did a good job doing that. But I really want to thank you for just the respect that you've shown for planning commission, the respect that you've shown for this developer, and specifically our staff. I know a number of the residents who aren't even here tonight have spoken with our staff to ask questions. We greatly appreciate that opportunity to answer the questions that you have, and I know our staff does as well. So just the respect that you've shown tonight in voicing your concerns, I know this is very personal to all of you, because this is your home. So I appreciate that. And even the planning commission, the respect you showed there as well. Thank you so much. It's very helpful for all of us. Like Councilmember Bales, I'll probably jump around a bit, but I'm gonna focus on some easy ones to get out of the way. Mr. McHugh, one of the concerns that's been brought up multiple times is the concern for overcrowding in schools. Legally, what can city council, if anything, take into consideration regarding school impact for housing developments, or any development in the city?
The city, being two separate entities, really has no control over schools. And again, we also have no control on the size of the families, the demographic makeup of a family that may move into these properties. We don't want to necessarily assume, nor could we, you know, discourage families with children. So they're allowed. We certainly have no restriction. We cannot restrict them. And the school, it is, you know, it's a legitimate concern, but it is a concern that needs to be more addressed to the school. Unfortunately, we have no real taxable way of dealing with schools in this situation.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Because I know that is a concern for a lot of residents, and I don't want any of you to think that that's remiss on any of us up here. But again, the legal implications of what council can and cannot decide kind of weigh in favor of some of those decisions. Trees seem to be the theme tonight with our Arbor Day proclamation, so a few questions about the trees. So during the planning commission meeting, somebody did mention an easement with a right-of-way regarding that tree line. And I know Councilmember Bales proposed maybe having a larger setback with that tree line, and then also having some type of no-cut-zone rule. My question becomes, were we to do that, were we to implement something that would be sufficiently worded legally and properly, who would then own those trees? My understanding would be that the developer would then have to maintain and own that property until the HOA comes in, because it would not be owned by the private residents. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on how it's set up. If it's just a no-cut-zone easement, the property's still owned by the individual owner, and they are obligated to not be able to cut the trees in their own yard. If it's, if the lot line were moved, and, you know, the 25-foot strip was owned by the HOA, then it's owned by the HOA. But really, the grading of the site precludes, they were originally at 20 feet, and I pushed them to 25, because of course, it's important to get as much as we can. But the grading on the site really precludes to be able to get much more than, if, I mean, they were saying that 25 feet was almost impossible, just because of, you have to get down to a flat building spot for these home sites, and to stay at a three-to-one slope, and not make it so that water runs off excessively fast, they had to pull those, pull that grading back, so that there is, it'd be better for them, easier for them to be able to start at the property line and have a smooth hill down to get a flat. But instead, we're making them start further away, so they have to come down with a steeper hill, if that makes sense.
No, I appreciate that. I'm not a home developer, nor am I in engineering, so I appreciate any explanation you can give me. I really do. And the reason I bring that up is because I know, I know one of our residents mentioned the concern that people will still cut them down, even if they're, you know, it's on their property. I'm one of those people, I don't cut down trees, but there was a bunch of shrubbery that we cut down in our backyard that was hideous. And I can imagine that there are some areas that are not fully grown beautiful trees that may be intrusive or thorny, and people would want to get rid of them. So to be able to protect that area and try to keep that privacy for residents, I know is important. Another question I had, too, with cutting down, so actually, this is a good diagram. The, I believe this is the fencing, the proposed fencing for the construction.
The orange is where we propose to keep fencing, or have them install it before grading occurs.
And now, the green space just outside of that fencing, would those trees then be cut down as well?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any way we could have the, and I'm assuming they would be cut down for specific legitimate construction reasons, that you would need to have those cut down for the developer to get in there and build the homes. But is, would there be a way that we could add a condition, maybe that some of those trees be replanted, to try to maintain some of that space? I know that that was a concern for some of the residents here tonight.
I mean, we could have them add some additional trees in the back, back there. You won't be able to replicate the existing woods.
Right, I know.
But, yeah, ideally, we'd be able to keep that whole thing. I mean, that's what I would prefer, but you would end up, because it's so much higher, you would end up having to come down with a, I mean, you're talking like a 35-foot drop from where that orange is to the property lines. And so you'd have to make a retaining wall that, it would be huge. It would look like the Hollywood sign out there. I mean, you're talking a steep drop if those, all those trees were retained up to the property lines. And so this becomes a three-to-one hill, starting at the orange down to the sites. But we can have the, you know, we can amend the landscaping to add additional evergreen trees back there, and some-
I don't know about the rest of council. I would be in favor of that, because that would preserve some, even those homes in Terra that do not abut a new property, or, you know, as they've mentioned, they're losing that green space back there. I would be in favor of putting something in there. I believe it was Councilmember Bales mentioned putting maybe a second tree on each lot. I might suggest putting the second tree, depending on where that is, in the backyard, though, instead of having two in the front, because maybe a lot of new homeowners don't want those trees in their front yards to block their new house, or whatever. But that was just a thought that came to mind, too, is then that would be additional trees in the back, kind of buffering that one. And we're really only talking about, I think, 13 homes in Terra that abut the new lots.
Typically, in a residential neighborhood, the reason the one tree came about is because it was a traditional street tree.
Right.
There are a few neighborhoods where they have a second tree, but they're not, because they were street trees. And so, required tree. Most neighborhoods I've ever gone through have more than one tree in their lot. And it's just, this is the one that's required, and we required it because it was a street tree, and we just kind of had them push it back out of the street, the right-of-way in this particular development. But I'm quite certain that every single house will have more trees around, as part of the base landscaping around each one of their home sites. But again, there's always the opportunity to add a second tree if council wants to go that way.
Thanks. And then, I know this was addressed in planning commission, but for those who were maybe unable to attend or unable to watch, can you also address how the city works with developers when we have these runoff issues with stormwater? You know, what is it that the city does to work with these developers to prevent creating more erosion issues?
Right. There is a stormwater ordinance, stormwater maintenance ordinance in our code of ordinances in the city. And what that states basically is, in a nutshell, that you can't, the post-development runoff can't be any more than the pre-development runoff. So they have to retain and contain all increased runoff that this development's going to occur. And that's why they created those two wet ponds out front. Now, what we've found over the years is that in a typical development, engineers will over-engineer that, because it's a lot cheaper to do it more than the required the first time, than to under-engineer it, and then find out they have to go back and redig a pond after they've already put the concrete and the pipes and everything else in it. So we've found over the years that these ponds actually improve the situations on the neighboring properties. It's not guaranteed, but that's what we've found. But what we do guarantee is that, you know, it won't be, based on our ordinance, that it won't be any worse than it is today.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, just last two questions for staff, I promise. With the Shakertown Road entrance, I know that there's concerns with that curve there. What, can you discuss what went into the planning for that, and if there were any, if the city did look at the grading issues and look at the curve, to see if there were any line-of-sight issues with coming around that area, as far as the entrance goes?
Yeah, originally, they had the entrance a little bit further to the west, and that was kind of a short distance. And so I had, we had to move it, and also to line up, there's kind of a stub street here, and we wanted to line up across the street from that stub street that services old Shakertown Road. I discussed this with our city engineer, and he didn't, about a line-of-sight issue, would it cause one? And he stated it would not. You know, if we come back, we can show some line-of-sight angles on a cross-section plan. We could certainly bring that back. Just based on the conversation, you know, he wasn't concerned that there was going to be a line-of-sight concern.
Thanks. I appreciate you proactively taking that into consideration. I know that that was a concern for the residents. I do have a few questions for the developer. I hope you didn't think you were gonna get off the hook that easy, sir. I do want to reiterate, we do appreciate that you are interested in the Beaver Creek community. But I have a question for you. Again, as I say, I don't know anything about building a home. So someone did mention a question about the wetlands, I believe it was on properties, plot numbers one and two. Can you talk about, I'm assuming you would not put a house somewhere where you think is going to sink into a hole. So can you talk a little bit about how that construction works, as far as that area?
Yeah, we can't, and we won't. The Ohio EPA is a heavy arm of regulation that we deal with. So not only is that a wetland, it's a categorized wetland, and then it's very prescriptive, and we'll have to do adding clay and all that to mitigate that. So it's not a simple process, and it's a heavily regulated process, again. Last thing we want to do as a home builder is build something that causes us to come back and deal with it. We have a longer-than-industry-average warranty for construction. So that's not the memory we want with our homeowners. So we're gonna do a lot that we self-police, and then we're also dealing with the Ohio EPA. We're dealing with your engineering group, and we have Ryan here with his engineering group, taking all that into consideration, and exactly how to deal with that. So there's a lot to it. I won't bore you with the lift sizes, and the clay amounts, and the density, and the PSI that's required. But there's a lot to that. It's all considered, just like the drainage issues, and a lot of the things that've come up. I appreciate, and there's a lot of engineering that goes behind the scenes onto this site to deal with surface water, turn soft surface into hard surface, and then getting that water to the right place. That's a lot what happens between meetings. So I appreciate the question and the chance to talk about that.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And one more question for you. I know we talked about this would be constructed in three separate phases, and I appreciate the fact that the last phase of construction would be up against the Terra Falls area, because those residents, hopefully, that would impact them the least amount over the next four to six years. One resident asked about reducing the work time from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday only. If we're looking at four to six years already, six days a week for 12 hours, how much time would that add to your construction build if council were to further reduce your building time, 8 to 6, only Monday through Friday?
Yeah, I'd have to sit down and put pencil and paper to tell you that. The issue is that a lot of construction, a lot of the time, is actually setting up your equipment and that. So there's a lot of time lost when you're setting up scaffolding and just take it back down, or to set up a framing crew just to take it back down for that short of time that they're actually doing the exterior work. The majority of the time of construction on a home is inside. So our goal as a home builder is to get that roof and dried in, as we say, as quickly as possible, because OSB, when it gets wet, it starts, you know, you can have warranty problems. The floor starts to squeak, et cetera. So we want that house dried in as quickly as possible. So that exterior work, that can be noisy, no denying it. We want to get that done as quickly as possible. You can get more work done inside. You can double up crews and do all those sort of things. So we want to minimize that, too. At the same time, we want to give these guys an opportunity to make money. And, you know, they're a big contributor to the economy, too, these guys that are building houses for us. And when they have good weather, they're gonna go, and there's gonna be a lot of days where they're rained out, and they can't make any money. So we're trying to balance all those needs out.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ram. Thank you, council.
And I could talk about photo cells on lamp posts, too, there. It can be a problem. So, streetlights would be all right. Thanks.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, I have a few questions. Mr. Burkett, please. One of the residents, Ms. Carlin, had mentioned utilities. Can you tell whether these are going to be underground utilities?
They'll be underground utilities. As with most neighborhoods, you'll see, every four houses or so, they'll have the junction box, the green junction box. But that's just typical on every single residential neighborhood.
Another question that was raised by Ms. Hoppin is the construction entrances. Where will those be located?
The only entrances they could use would be the two, I mean, there's no ability to get into the existing neighborhoods. And when we limit construction entrances, that's when, like at Cedar, Cedarwood, Cedar Brook, Cedar Brook, there is a back way through Newton, and we want to make sure that, you know, trucks with mud and all that don't go on through the existing residential neighborhoods. But these would be limited to the access points you see on the site plan.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any temporary access points placed upon the properties?
There may be a temporary one at a time, but none have been designated yet.
Okay. And then kind of-
But nothing long-term.
Kind of along that same question, in regards to this grading construction fence, how long is that gonna be up? That's not gonna be up for the entire four to six years, is it?
It could be. I mean, if it gets ratty, then, you know, we would definitely have to put new ones in. But, yeah, I mean, it just depends. We want to make sure that that area is protected as best as possible. It also depends on their phasing plan. If they only show graded, sometimes developers will bring a grading plan that just shows phase one, or they may show a grading plan that goes for all three phases. Depends on, there's disadvantages for them to do all three at once, because they'll have to post bonds for the, you know, water and sewer for the whole thing. So that's why there are phases, so they don't have to post a million-dollar bond for all this water and sewer lines that they're not gonna put in for two or three years. So if they only come in with phase one, then we would only have, and they're not gonna be doing any grading on phase two or phase three, then we won't have them put the fence up on phase two or- Two or Phase Three, then we won't have them put the fence up on Phase Two or Phase Three. But before, you would issue a grading permit, which is something they have to get before they come out and start moving work. They'll have to put those fences in in the second and third phases. And if they finish Phase One and then start Phase Two, then we'll have them pull a fence out of Phase One.
Can you describe this fence? Is it like a normal fence?
It's just that orange snow fence that you see. I mean, it's four feet tall, three feet tall. It's not the most attractive fences in the world, but it definitely delineates point A and point B.
Okay. Let's see. I apologize. I'm going to jump around a little bit as well.
Can I add a comment?
I'll have more questions.
On the same subject?
On the grading.
Please.
Sure.
It's a, did I leave my glasses up? Those are your glasses. I'll take them. So-
Name a price.
Really, best practice is if we can, and especially a big dirt job like this, and Cedar Brook was another example, you try and do all the earthwork you can on your first pass. And yeah, it's spending money up front, but remobilizing crews just to come in and move dirt around again and chase it around, it ends up being expensive. So we would work the engineer to make sure all those volumes can work, but the goal would be do the biggest part of that earthmoving immediately. And if you take Cedar Brook as a reference, we're putting in that final section, there's no earth that needs to be moved. It was moved a year ago. Really, we just have to roll out the asphalt, put in the sewer and all that, so.
So once that earth movement is complete, then we no longer need the fence?
Yeah, I'd have to work, we'd have to work together on that. But our goal is to get the majority of that earthwork done as soon as possible. There's fine grading that has to be done, there's going to be freeze thaw, there's going to be rain, there's going to be all that sort of stuff we have to deal with. But overwhelmingly, we do want to get that done. Bring in the big pans, the big equipment, and hit it once.
Okay. And while you're here, just, you could stay put, please. I have a question about the green space. It was a question that was raised, I think, in prior Planning Commission meetings and maybe earlier today. What is the intended use for that green space? I know a lot of it's going to have to be graded, but I guess what could we anticipate that green space to look like upon completion of the development?
We're going to make a lot of it mowable. It'll be maintained by the HOA, and that's really the goal. Some of it, as the residents have mentioned, you know, can't be built on. You know, obviously, other parts can, but we want it to be a benefit to the community. So, you know, similar to other communities, there's going to be large, mowable portions of it.
Do you know roughly, on that green space area, do you know how many acres of trees are actually being destroyed?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't know that number. I can tell you, acre of trees goes down for about $7,000. Builders don't like taking down trees. Despite everything we always grew up with and believed, we don't. One, customers will pay more for trees. There's that piece. Number two, we work on the land all day. That's, we love ground. And somehow, it's somehow portrayed that we want to tear all those trees down and pay another $7,000 an acre. It's just not true. It just isn't what we want to do. We want to develop great lots that are a benefit to the community. We don't want to spend any more money, more money than we have to. And there's no doubt residents walking in are models. Our old saying is people buy lots, because we can build whatever house they want. We can customize, and we can do whatever you want. You fall in love with the lot, just like you fell in love with your lot, just like I love the lot I live in. So we want trees.
And then, oh, you're not done. I have two more questions. Basements, no basements?
Basements.
Yes, but basements.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not worried about there being excess water. Again, there's a lot of engineering that goes into this to make sure those houses are raised to a point where water's flowing away from them, there's swales in between them. There's a lot of subsurface and on-surface water management, and, you know, that's what Jeff and his team do. That's a big part of, especially a site like this, is unique topography.
Certainly. Okay, and then I think I only have one more question for you. What would the impact be if construction were perhaps maybe not limited on the hours, or changing the hours, but just eliminating Saturdays?
Tough one to answer, because if it rains Wednesday through Friday, it's terrible, right? People buy a house with the anticipation of getting in before Christmas, or getting in before Thanksgiving, or getting in at a reasonable date. And you could really wash that out. You could have considerable impact on that. It's not fair to people that are buying the home. It's not fair to the guys that are trying to build it. We don't want to be a nuisance to anybody. And there are reasonable standards there. We want to discover what that reasonable standard is and meet it. But we want to build houses for the people who buy them. And we want to be cognizant of the neighbors around us, too.
Okay. I think that is all the questions that I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curran, oh, you weren't, were you finished entirely? Here, just-
I'll be finished for now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Curran.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to, again, echo the comments that the other members made. One of the things I would really like to see is a developer and the planning department work on that easement there, the trees, see if that could be, Mr. Regano brought it up, see if more could be done there. It's already been echoed around here directly and indirectly, and I just wanted to kind of leave with that comment. I don't want to beat these other issues to death. They've already been brought up.
Okay.
That's all, your honor.
All right. Vice Mayor Adams.
Well, one of the advantages and/or disadvantages of being in this seat is everybody else asks most of the questions that I wanted to ask. My biggest concern was the stormwater, because-
You know the first next time.
That's okay. The bit was the stormwater, and I think you addressed that. It has to be at least what it is today.
Right. If there is issues, it can exacerbate that. It has to maintain a minimum status quo, but-
Because I know we do have some stormwater issues here in Beaver Creek, and I just don't want to grade anymore, so.
Correct.
The other thing, and I'm going to say the same thing on the trees, if there's some way we can get that so we can maintain that they will stay there. And I understand people own a lot. They can cut the trees down if they want to, but if we could come up with something there that would, you know, to appease the neighborhood so that doesn't, somebody doesn't cut them down and have an open spot right through there.
If it would, if it's a route to council wants to go, I think it would be easier, it would be more beneficial for everyone. I mean, I know that for the screening-wise, we want to keep everything. And like I said at the Planning Commission, I would anticipate somebody buys a house, they want to keep their own screening as much as possible. But if we do a straight-on, no-cut-zone easement, we found, we did that over on Long Meadow, and we found that people are calling in, they've got small, I've got bushes growing up, you know, honeysuckle or shrubs growing up that, you know, and it's technically a no-cut zone. They can't cut it out, or weeds or anything else. So if a conservation easement or no-cut-zone easement, if it could specify, like, trees more than, no cutting of trees more than like four inches, or three inches, you know, in diameter, that would make it easier for us to enforce. Because right now, I've gone out to the Long Meadow neighborhood several times to try to get between two neighbors that are arguing whether or not the tree's dead or not. And I'm just concerned that, you know, I'd be out there arguing whether or not a honeysuckle bush is dead or not, and whether or not, we have to get an arborist to come in and, you know, give a scientific-
In my experience, honeysuckle doesn't die.
You're right.
We could send you out, Don.
Yeah. And that wasn't, I had actually written that, but I wrote the other thing, what about a dead tree? What about something like that? I mean-
Right, and that's where we get into trouble, because, or not trouble, but that's where it just becomes, because some people think, no, it's going to come back, or no, it is dead. There's disagreements, and then I'm in the middle of trying to determine whether it's dead or alive or otherwise. And so I have an arborist, and it just, it becomes, we're, for lack of a better word, babysitting the no-cut zone and trying to determine. We'll certainly go down that route if that's what council prefers. I think that it would be easier for us to enforce it if it were something like, you know, trees of three, two, three, four inches in caliber, so that the big trees stay. They die a lot more infrequently than a small tree would.
When I agree with you. I'm one of those people. I have a lot of trees behind my place, and I don't want to cut any of them down, but-
Right, and, but if you had one that you didn't like, you would want to be able to cut it down.
Yes, I think we need to be, the only thing I would say is that we probably should be somewhat cautious, because we did have one that we actually, I think it was with Mr. Graff, but we actually ended up having to come back to council to modify.
We had to remove the no-cut zone because it was such a problem.
Yeah, we had to, because we were in a situation where dead trees and, I mean, literally, they couldn't cut anything down. But yet, anybody looking at it would say, yeah, that tree needs to be cut down before it falls on somebody.
Right, and we were afraid that we would end up being liable if we were telling them they couldn't cut the tree down, and it fell and hurt somebody, and then the city, where we said, well, no, you have to leave it up, and it becomes dangerous.
It became quite a, and council actually had to come in and modify it. So I'm not, I'm not saying that we couldn't come up with a plan, but that probably is not the plan.
If we did that, would then council be liable if something like that did happen?
Well, I would strongly recommend that we probably not, we, you know, if we're going to protect trees, and I certainly think protecting trees is, certainly like everybody here, I think most people would say protecting trees is a good thing. But I think, though, we need to consider who's going to assume the responsibility of determining whether these trees are, whether something should be cut or not. I mean, we set a basic standard, but beyond that, you know, it may be something that, between the property owner and the HOA board makes that determination to pass, so that Randy isn't out there having to determine between property owners whether that tree's deceased or not. You know, it just seems like maybe the HOA might be, might be something to consider.
And I agree with that. I think that's one of the questions on the HOA. I mean, was it possible for them to maintain that, or them to have jurisdiction over that? If we could put something in there about that.
Or at least provide them an easement with jurisdiction, even though it may still technically remain the property of, you know, the property owner. It's, to some extent, no different than, you know, trees on your backyard, and you have a DPNL, or now whatever it's referring to, AES or something, or whatever it is. But yeah, some of that nature. So we, I'll talk to Randy with respect to that.
And I think one question for the builder, you said that it would, all the grading would be done up front? You wouldn't do it in sections? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to over-commit to all of it, but yes, we're going to want to come in with the big pans, the big equipment, and overall, we're trying to do all that earthmoving up front. Stopping and starting is difficult. There's a lot of expense in dirtmoving, and there's a lot of expense in sewer and all that sort of stuff. But the dirtmoving, there's some real value to getting it done en masse.
Well, I agree with that.
And the goal is obviously, right, we don't want to take any, bring any dirt in, and we don't want to take any dirt out. So all the dirt's to stay on the site. So you got to kind of play Tetris with where you're going to put your dirt. If it'll allow it, we'll do that. And that, there's economic reasons for it. There's, you strip topsoil, you bring it back and put it over lots before you put down sod. There's little microsteps that are happening there, too, that cause us to want to do mass grading when we can. Like Cedar Brook would be that example. We came in with the equipment. Because of the confines of the site, we were able to kind of get it all done. You can't always do that, but given the size here and the amount of dirt that has to move, I would think, and again, I'm not an engineer, I started by saying that, but I would think we want to do a lot of this earthmoving in one step. Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, a couple things. There are some key things that I think that the staff and a developer can sit down and come to a better understanding and conclusion. One would be that tree row along the back. We don't want to control it, but an HOA would be fine to control that tree line. We've already moved the, increased the rear yard area for the, because we moved those houses up closer to the street. So for that 25 feet to be part of an HOA, wouldn't hurt anything. But I'm not saying that's the only way to go, but I'm, I just think that the staff and the developer need to look at it again. The line-of-sight issue, we've, apparently, our engineering staff has looked at it, and maybe they can describe it a little more at a future meeting. We wanted a wetlands, EPA wetlands condition added, and we wanted to talk about more tree replacement. It looks like the way the topography is, we can't really stop the tree removal in those areas, some areas, but we can try to find a way to replace some of it. So based on those ideas, and based on the fact that we have two readings for the ordinance, so for us to approve this tonight would be approving a site plan before technically the rezoning is complete.
Right.
And while it's been done, and it can be done, I would prefer to see this issue tabled until staff and the developer can get back together-
I agree.
-as well as waiting for the zoning to be approved.
Agreed.
So that's where I'm at right now. I think we've heard a lot of great discussion. I think it's a great development. It really, it's going to be, over what could go there, it is going to, but we can make it a little better, I do believe. All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one other thing?
Sure.
Perhaps. I wouldn't mind the developer and staff to talk about, at least provide us a little bit more landscaping detail for the lots as well.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion, one way or the other?
Move the table, your honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table the specific site plan 21-2. Pardon? Till the next regular scheduled meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And ladies and gentlemen, we will take about a 10 to 15-minute break. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are back to our regular scheduled meeting on April 26. Next on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 21-07.
This is a second reading of an ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way of Wancook Court upon application of the owners of property abutting the same right-of-way.
Okay. So who's, oh, this is, I'm sorry, second reading. Any comments by council?
Please.
Any further input by staff? No? All right, this was sponsored by Councilmember Bales. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 21-07.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-07. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance 21-09.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2021, and to amend ordinances 21-06 and 20-33.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, mayor, and members of city council. Any questions? No, obvious. Just a quick overview. We applied for a community development block grant for the lighting at the Lofino parking lot behind the senior center there. With some of the delays and the pandemic, we had it budgeted for last year, and it went through the county, and the county actually didn't make the payment till this year. So again, we have to just reappropriate it and certify the revenue, because it has to run through our books, even though it was a county grant. So just kind of a housekeeping thing there to straighten that out for the delay. The second item is a, we received a donation of $1,500 dedicated to the advancement of the senior center programming. In order to spend that money, we need to appropriate the money and then appropriate it for use for programming for this year. So, and that is it.
All right. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 21-09.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-09. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Next is ordinance 21-10.
This is an ordinance to establish a new special revenue fund in conformity with federal and state laws and generally accepted accounting principles.
Turner, you're on again. Turner, you're on again.
Yes, again, with the passage of the American Rescue Plan, what everybody's kind of considering, ARC now, everybody likes to use these acronyms, the city and local governments will going to be receiving some government relief to combat the COVID-19 pandemic, help with public health and safety and economic impacts. In order to do that, to receive the funds, we do need to establish a new fund, just like we did with the CARES, and that's what this ordinance does, is establishes that new fund for receipt of the money. We're anticipating getting the first half of the money probably in May, so we want to make sure that this is open and in compliance with, as Diane stated, the federal, state, and accounting principle guidelines.
Thank you. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close that portion. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to move ordinance 21-10 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-21-10 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21-14.
This is a resolution to authorize the submission of a funding application through the Community Investment Grant Program to the Green County Board of Commissioners.
Sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Earlier this year, city staff has made aware of a new grant program through the Green County Department of Development. The purpose of this grant program is to provide funding to assist in the construction of roadways, utilities, items like that, to help either spur new businesses or to keep existing businesses here in the county. In looking at the requirements of the grant program, staff is recommending an application be submitted for the McGrath Way Extension Project. And just for perspective here, St. Luke's is kind of across the street, this is North Fairfield Road, Dayton Xenia, Newcomer Funeral Home, and Duncan Donus is up here. This project has been on our thoroughfare plan for a number of years, and really, the benefit of this, it helps preserve traffic flow at the North Fairfield Road and Dayton Xenia Road intersection, as it provides a cut through for people to miss the intersection. The grant itself, the project rather, that, to pay for the work, would consist of three components. We recommend an application to Green County for $350,000. It's believed that part of the COVID relief money will help cover the line share of the cost extend water main through the roadway. And the last component would be, would be city funding to be made available in the next budget cycle. Overall, it's a $1.4 million project, which includes all the roadways, sidewalks, and all the utility extensions to make the lots ready for development. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Be nice to get that completed, though.
Absolutely.
Certainly will. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21-15.
This is auth, this is a resolution authorizing the Police Department to accept the Attorney General, Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grants Program funding.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. This is our annual grant application for the DARE program, and this resolution allows me to accept the state grant monies to be applied to our DARE officers' salary during the school year. This grant is through the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and the Beaver Creek Police Department will receive in the 21-22 school year $30,018.2, and this will be for the DARE officers teaching, who approximately teaches 600 students per year. And recommend passage of this resolution.
All right, thank you. Comments? Questions? Motion?
Move to approve resolution 21-15.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, resolution 21-16.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to sign a release of mortgage and any additional documents that may be required to release a mortgage in the original principal amount of $4,613.60 given by Barbara Schoenborn to the City of Beaver Creek pursuant to the Senior Plus Program.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor and council, again, this is exactly what was stated. This is a mortgage that the city, it was a program many years ago during the course of a tax foreclosure action filed by the county. It was discovered that this mortgage is still outstanding, the, and I've told the attorney for the county that we can disclaim it once council approves the release of this mortgage, as it's been determined there is no money owed. It was one of the situations where if, if the improvements were made, the mortgage would, you know, go away, but it never was released. So we just need it released. House cleaning. House cleaning, exactly. Any comments? Motion?
Motion to approve resolution 21-16.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds to approve resolution 21-16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Was Diane going to read it? Ah, okay. Yeah, I'll do this one, too.
Okay, this is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to sign a release of, wait a minute, this is the wrong one.
Diane, you want it?
I have it. It's right here. Sorry. This was our last minute one. This is a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a letter on behalf of the City of Beaver Creek stating that City Council does not oppose the transfer of a proposed liquor license from Agnes &amp; Orson to LLC, to Agnes &amp; Orson to LLC.
Okay, thank you. Again, yes, Mayor, and council will be quick on this. This is a situation where we have a business owner who has been attempting, I understand, for six months to get her liquor license transferred out of Montgomery County to, she has a business now opened here in Green County, in the City of Beaver Creek, and this will allow her a transfer of the liquor license. It's a purchase and carry arranged business, it's not a bar or anything of that nature. So, but this will allow it, and this is, the liquor department suggested that she proceed in this manner, and so under statute, has to be approved by council, or at least no objections. So this is not approving any, a new liquor license? No, this is actually a transfer of her liquor license from one county to another county. That's what this is amounting to. All right. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve resolution 21-17, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-17. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Decision items, acceptance of the Tax Incentive Review Council recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Again, one of the statutory requirements when set of establishing, establishing or running a TIF is that an annual review occurred by a Tax Incentive Review Committee making recommendation whether or not that TIF is working as it should, and whether it should continue on for the next year. Last week, the Green County, it was a combined Tax Incentive Review Committee of all the different TIFs and CRAs and enterprise zones throughout the county, so it was one mass meeting. But the City of Beaver Creek's Turk was first. I did a small presentation on the, the status of the Green in terms of their, their TIF where, you know, they currently have a fund balance of $959,000 in the fund balance, and this is derived from their annual assessment payments that were above and beyond what the required debt service payment was over the years. And that, you know, their, their property value has been increasing incrementally over the last 10 years as well. So the TIF is acting as it should, it's, it's a, a healthy fund balance, and I recommend it to the Turk that the TIF be continued through 2021, and then reviewed again at the next Turk meeting. The Turk voted on that, and voted to accept staff's recommendation, and voted to continue the, the TIF for the, the next year. And the next step is to have City Council review that recommendation and approve it, and that's to fulfill our statutory requirements for the TIF. So again, both the staff and the Turk recommend that City Council accept the Turk's recommendation and continue the TIF.
Questions? Motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Committee and adopt its findings, that the Green TIF continue with no change.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the Tax Incentive Review Committee's recommendation. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is board appointments. Do we need to do nominations on this at all? Okay, so we need a motion to open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Move to open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, I'll open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Brayden Fleck.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Cynthia Bigler.
Is there a motion to close nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Since only two for two seats, those are, or for three seats, actually, but there are only two nominees, do I have a motion to appoint? Is there a specific term that we need to mention? Oh, there we go.
Mayor, I move to appoint Brayden Fleck and Cynthia Bigler to the Environmental Advisory Board for the term ending February 29th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint both individuals to the term ending February 29th, 24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. See, I just needed to flip the page, not have any questions to answer. Not used to these six-page agendas. All right, next. Council time. Start over here to my left again, then, Councilmember Curran, you got anything you would like to?
Cinco de Mayo. Your Honor, as the senior citizens are having their meal again, people, they have about 125 people signed up, they can have about 150, and encourage people to call senior citizens if you'd like to have their wonderful Cinco de Mayo dinner, which will be available on May 5th, that's a Wednesday. It's wonderful.
Councilmember Schwartz.
I'd just like to remind everyone that on May 6th is the day of prayer at 6:30 at Kirkmont Presbyterian Church, if you're interested in attending. Additionally, on May 21st, Kiwanis is going to be sponsoring, or a co-sponsor for a golf outing at Beaver Creek Golf Club, so if anyone is interested, recommend you look at the Kiwanis site and sign up for a team. That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Just again, thank you to the Girl Scouts who came tonight for their gold awards. These are some amazing young women in our community and in the southwestern Ohio area. I know Suzanne mentioned it, but just the resiliency and creativity for the good work that they do in our community cannot be understated. So thank you again for all of that. And to steal just a little bit of Pete's thunder, also a congratulations to Officer Brownlee, who is going to be our new community engagement officer. I know he's going to do a phenomenal job, so I look forward to working with him in that position. Thank you.
Councilmember Doerr.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo the comments on the Girl Scouts. I've had the opportunity to visit two of the three parks, and I've seen the great work firsthand, so I'd really like to congratulate, congratulate Noel Massarelli, Corinna Ress, and Catherine Ress for their great work. I've seen them out in the community, looking at different parks other than the ones they fixed up, so it's really fantastic work. I'd like to encourage everyone to vote. On May the 4th, we have important issues on the ballot. I'd really encourage everyone to watch Mayor Stone's video discussing those issues. We have the streets and the schools. On the schools, our first grader has really excelled this year. He has a wonderful, wonderful teacher, and his reading comprehension has really improved, and I'm so thankful for that. And then on the streets, it's a renewable, renewal 3.4 mil continuous street levy. It represents 76% of the revenue for the street levy fund, and includes funding of 37 full-time employees. If you drive around Beaver Creek, as I do, you see just tremendous work on the part of, of those that work for the city. And so I'd like to ask all residents to consider both ballot items. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
I will echo that, too. Next week, next Tuesday, May 4th, get out and vote. The street levy is critically important for us to continue the operations that we've got, so I would ask everyone for their support on that issue. Also want to thank the Parks Department for handing out some kites last, I think it was last week, and that's a pretty cool program. Obviously, congrats to all the gold award recipients tonight. My daughter is in Girl Scouts, and she loves it, and I only can hope that one day she gets her, her gold award as well. And finally, just encourage everyone to celebrate Arbor Day, take a walk in the parks, enjoy our, our fantastic parks and forests that we've got throughout Beaver Creek. That's all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate the Girl Scouts as well that earned the gold award. I'm going to be a little personal here, especially to Noel Massarelli. I've known this young lady since she was about three weeks old, when her mother brought her to church, and watching her grow up and become the woman that she is today, it's, it was really a joy for me to sit here and watch her get that award. So, a big thank you to Beaver Creek Youth Council for taking the project on of painting the gazebo at 5th Third Gateway Park on the bike path. They did a great job. I don't know what the last time it was painted, but it certainly looks a whole lot better now, so we thank them for that. And I know they're going to be doing some other projects with the Parks Department as they go forward, so the, the youth of our community are really standing up and doing their part for this, for our community. Beaver Creek Police Department's holding Safety Town again this year. It's going to be held June 14th through the 17th, twice daily, in the morning and the evening. Unfortunately, it's sold out as soon as they put it up to be, to let them know they're doing it, it filled up right away. So I'll be out there doing some work with them as well. I usually do the driver's licenses they get at the end of the, their time, so. And that's one of the first, as Councilwoman Garcia said, our new community engagement officer, Chris Brownlee, is going to be one of his first projects that he does. I'm looking forward to working with him. He's, he's really a great guy. And just another reminder that we've got the street levy on the ballot next Tuesday. It's really important to our city to be able to maintain our streets, so I think, it says we have 253 centerline miles and 577 lane miles that we have to maintain. Takes money to do that, and it takes people. And as was said earlier, it's 76% of our operating funds for the streets, and it's very important that we pass that. So I encourage you to go out and vote. Beaver Creek has two items on the ballot. I voted here a couple of weeks ago, and it was very quick, and it's, but I encourage you to, to try to support both of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm only, I'm going to talk about street levy just a second, too, to add, repeat a couple very good points, but a lot of the census data came out today. I don't know if anybody's seen it or not. I don't think it's gotten down to the local level yet, but it's, they've got the census data out for the states. You know, Ohio didn't grow very much compared to some others, but overall, it was the lowest growth nationally, like the second lowest of all-time census-taking growth, that, so it was very low. But anyway, so we'll be looking forward to seeing how we might have grown, and it shouldn't be too long before that comes out. But I do want to remind people about this street levy. long before that comes out. But I, too, want to remind people about this street levy. It's a very important levy. It's been in existence since 1986. 76% of the street monies is a huge amount of money. And it is extremely important. And I want to remind people that we all got a shock with our reassessments. But this is a voted levy. This is a voted millage. This is not inside millage. So we do not receive any additional dollars because of the reevaluation. We were getting the same dollar amount that we have been getting right along. So it's an important thing. I know because I've heard many people, including myself, you look at that reevaluation and say, well, who's going to get all the money? Well, that's all inside millage that is primarily affected when you do a reevaluation. So just know that we're asking for this renewal. It's very important. The other aspect of this renewal is if we were to not renew it before it expires, we would then forever lose the 12.5% that the state is paying. So to continue this levy in its current state is an advantage to every taxpayer, because eventually, it's going to, the monies are going to have to be raised one way or the other. And so give it your due consideration. I encourage you to do that. And a little homework goes a long way. So that's all I have. We'll go to the city manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just quickly, this was mentioned, but this is a little bit about Officer Brownlee as our newest community engagement officer. So we congratulate him. He actually started today. He originally was hired back in 2012 as a patrol officer, and as you can see, is Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from UD. I won't hold UD against him, but, you know, just kidding. And of course, he went to Police Academy through Sinclair back in 2010. And a couple of recognitions that he's had, Mad Mothers Against Drunk Driving. He's been awarded the Top Cop back in 2015, Award of Excellence, Green County Consortium on Domestic and Sexual Violence Excellence in Law Enforcement Award back in 15. He is a hostage negotiator through our regional RERT since 2018. And he is a part of the Beaver Creek Police Department Coordinator for the Green County Police Explorer Program. And he's received several different department letters of recognition and department commendation. So we're pleased to have him. He's going to be working with Katie and myself and Chief closely. It's a new role. I think we all commend Officer Brown, who started this, you know, back when Chief Evers recommended back in, I think it was 17, when we were doing budget time, saying a community engagement officer, you know. And it's like, what? What are they going to be doing? You know. And Officer Brown took it to the next level, and council supported that. That's part of that community policing model, which has been very, very effective. And since the retirement of Officer Brown, we're very confident in Officer Brownlee, that he is going to step up and not replace Officer Brown. He's going to take it and run with it and even build it even further. And Officer Brown would say that exactly. So we have utmost confidence in Officer Brownlee and his new role. So we congratulate him and look for great things for the future. I did want to mention, we are hiring. Not only this is for the outdoor summer, I'll pick on this first, the Parks Department, you know, camp counselors, recreation events. I mean, a lot of positions that we have because the Parks Department, not only the cutting of the grass, but the parks and recs and the camps and the sports management, interns, all that kind of thing, we depend on seasonal workers. So we need help with this because with the COVID restrictions being lifted on outside, different events, and even with the protocols that we still have in place, we're able to have success with these events. So we are needing seasonal positions. With that also, I did want to mention, we do have some full-time positions. We have two Operator One positions in public services that we need filled. Those are full-time with benefits positions under public services, as well as our Public Service Superintendent position, which is a new vacancy that was just posted today. You can find all the seasonal and all the full-time jobs all under the beavercreekohio.gov. You'll see a employment button. You press the employment, and that will drive you to the list of positions. If you're interested, you click on one. It'll tell you all the full description, and you can apply online through our new system, which is terrific to have. You can submit your application, cover letter, everything through online now, which is a great feature. And this has been mentioned by Mr. Kern, Councilmember Kern, mentioning the senior center. So celebrate Cinco de Mayo with the senior center next Wednesday. You can register online or call the 426-6166. Sounds good. I haven't had dinner, so I don't want to read what's on the menu there. And as everybody said, the street levy renewal, I appreciate the comments by council. Just remember, Monday, it is a renewal, so it's no increase in revenues to be received. That was a good point. And making it a continuous locks in that rollback and secures the capital so we can continue to have the street funding, the employee funding, and everything that we do for the streets. It's a small department for the second largest landmass in this region, 27.7 square miles. So I remind people how large Beaver Creek is. We are the second largest in landmass. So a lot of infrastructure to maintain, and this will help us with our core aspect of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe we can get Officer Brownlee to come in one evening and kind of give us his thoughts on how he might do the community relations.
Yes, we are planning on that. Just today was his first day back and first day in the new position. So we're going to give him a little push of break.
Didn't want to push it that far, huh?
Yeah. We'll get him in here within the next month.
All right. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? If there is, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move right on. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.